Along. Good evening and welcome. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on October twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the seventeenth day of September, two thousand and twenty four. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calendar. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and the Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January seventeen, two thousand and twenty three. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by planning board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We'll have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Here.
Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell? Ms. Perlmutter?
Here.
Ms. Sacks? Mr. Taylor?
Uh, Jack, you're mute is on, you're muted.
Here.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, announcements. I have one. I just wanted to let folks know, and if you get the municipal newsletter and happen to check your email, you might have seen it there, too, but um, a couple of nights ago, Princeton was honored at New Jersey Futures Smart Growth Awards ceremony at the Performing Arts Center in New Brunswick. And the municipality was um, received this award for the Terhune Harrison Mixed Use Village. Um, the various redevelopment and redevelopment projects in the immediate vicinity of the shopping center. The uh, the, there's, you know, a whole page of text in the program about um, Princeton's submission. Um, but it concludes with, "New Jersey Future is proud to recognize Terhune Harrison Mixed Use Village with the two thousand and twenty four Smart Growth Award, celebrating its innovative approach to transforming a challenged area into a thriving, resilient community." And so I um, I just wanted to point out that the Smart Growth Awards are a big deal in the, in the planning world. It's, it really is a competitive uh, and very rigorous process, and so a lot of credit goes to Mia Sax and Christine Symington, uh, who worked very intensively on the submission, and of course, also to Justin Lesko. And um, I just wanted to, to call that out because it's really nice to have um, projects that we know a lot about, um, recognized statewide for, for being uh, examples of good planning. So that's my announcement. Um, any other announcements from, from board members or I hope Mia's um, ears are burning as she makes her way to uh, uh, to her other commitment tonight. Any other um, announcements from, from board members or from staff? Uh, David?
I, I just wanted to comment that I am having some computer problems. So I'm on audio on my phone. And you can see me on video on my computer. I just wanted to um, alleviate any question about that.
Yes, and um, I um, my hat goes off to you for figuring out a way for there not to be an echo. Even though you're connected in two different ways, so.
My, my solution is that the audio on my computer is broken.
Ah, okay, all right.
No, no tech savviness, just uh.
Just, just good, good luck, bad luck.
Right.
All right, um, I don't think that we have any subcommittee reports since we just met last week and and heard uh, committee reports, so let's go straight to the application tonight. Um, this is for, from the Institute for Advanced Study. This is preliminary and final major site plan with variances at One Einstein Drive and Olden Lane. Uh, block one zero five zero one, lot one point zero three. This is file number twenty four twenty four dash four six seven P. Um, welcome to all of you from the Institute. Mr. Muller, uh, notice, et cetera?
Publication service are in order and the board has jurisdiction.
Great. Um, uh, so all of you who are here on behalf of the Institute for Advanced Study, as I said, welcome, and you can activate your cameras. Um, I'm going to invite Mr. Lesko to sort of set the table here, and then um, well, after we swear in our own professionals, we will welcome you, Mr. DeGrazia, and your team and witnesses and swear you all in uh, at the same time as well.
Thank you.
So um, Justin Lesko, go right ahead.
And Justin, if you could raise your right hand, and is Dan is here as well?
Yes.
Yes, Dan, the both Dans.
And Derek is here as well? Oh, and both ends, okay.
And, and Victor and Ock as well. Okay, so let's just.
No Derek this evening, Derek has a conflict.
Okay, if, if the board um, professionals could raise their right hand, you swear or affirm a testimony about to give be the truth.
I do.
I do.
They so sworn or affirmed, uh.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, members of the board and members of the public. Um, I would like to share my screen to begin. And it is loading right now. Uh, and okay, now if you could see that um, I am showing the publicly available NJ map parcel explorer from Rowan University, and I expect we will call this PB one, Jerry?
Yes, exactly.
Great, I'm getting, getting better at this. Um, as you can see, the Institute for Advanced Study parcel is in the center of my screen. Uh, to the north and east, you'll see residential homes as part of the Battle Road neighborhood. Uh, the institute's faculty and scholar housing is more directly to the east across Olden Lane. Uh, the institute woods are to the south of the campus, and additional newer housing for the institute is to the west, and the Princeton Battlefield State Park is not too far behind it. Uh, the IAS campus is in the E two educational zone of the former township. The property is not within a locally designated historic district, nor is it on the state and national registers. Uh, however, the campus is listed in the historic preservation element of the master plan under Historic Resources for Potential Local Designation. Uh, this specific building we're discussing tonight was not identified, though, in the master plan. Additionally, the State Historic Preservation Office issued an opinion in two thousand and six that the campus would be eligible for designation to the state and national historic registers, uh, though this has not been acted upon. Um, so therefore, there are no local, state, or national historic regulations on the building in the application before you or the campus in general. Uh, so the building before you, I'm going to zoom in a little. Uh, Jerry, do we need to call this PB two now that I zoomed in?
I, I don't think so.
Okay, great. Um, so this building is the Historical Studies Social Sciences Library to the south of the parcel. It is off of the Einstein uh, Drive Loop Road, named after a former, former faculty member. Uh, it is just north of the Institute Pond. Uh, the library is a two-story building designed by Wallace K. Harrison of the firm Harrison and Abramovich, uh, and it opened in nineteen sixty five when J. Robert, Robert Oppenheimer was still the director of the institute. Uh, the site slopes down uh, towards the pond, um, so I'm just going to scroll down a little. And the building appears to be one story, more or less, at the northern end, and two stories at the southern end, if your back is to the pond, um, with that kind of basement level being, you know, showing that and then showing the first floor above it. Uh, the applicant proposes additions to the existing library building, uh, including another story of just under eighteen thousand square feet, a five thousand square foot addition on the first floor, and about five hundred square feet uh, in an addition on the basement level. Uh, there is a plaza to the east of the library that they're looking to renovate as part of this application. Doing so would remove nineteen Linden trees uh, that you could see here. Um, a total of thirty seven trees are proposed to be removed as part of this project, requiring fifty five replacement trees per our shade tree ordinance. Uh, the applicant proposes twenty four trees in the immediate vicinity of the library and thirty one elsewhere on the IAS property to meet that uh, quota. Um, the proposal also includes the installation of four electric vehicle charging stations uh, in the southwest corner of the parking lot adjacent to the library. Uh, the proposal does not include any bicycle parking spaces, uh, forty four of which would be required uh, from this application, or a variance must be requested. Uh, there are also significant sustainability and green building measures incorporated into this project. Um, but I know the applicant has a presentation on those and all of the other things I mentioned. Uh, so I will defer to them at this point. Um, I will also hold my comments to the end from my report dated October eighteenth. Uh, and as mentioned earlier, um, Mr. Weissman is here with the engineering and zoning report. Mr. Bridger is not here tonight uh, due to a conflict. Uh, Mr. Anasike is here with his traffic engineering report, and Mr. Dobremilsky is here with his landscape architecture report. Uh, so that's all I have for now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, Dan or Victor or other Dan, um, is there anything that you want to bring to our attention before we hear from the applicant? Uh, and that would be sort of any kind of red flag kind of things, not I, I, I'm, that's not meant to be a softball, it's a straightforward question. I'm not seeing any. Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Dan, yes, Dan Weissman.
Thank you, uh, and good evening, everyone. Um, just two points, uh, just wanted to call out briefly before the applicant goes into their presentation. Um, there is required bicycle parking with this application. Uh, Princeton Code requires uh, bicycle parking for any addition that increases floor area by fifteen percent or more of the original building. Um, that requirement would then apply to the entirety of the building. Um, so something that's missing from the report, if you went through it, is the actual size of the proposed building completed. Uh, it measures out to approximately sixty one thousand, one hundred and forty two square feet. Uh, the bicycle parking requirement is fourteen hundred square feet or, or one space per fourteen hundred square feet, so there's a requirement for forty four bicycle parking spaces. Um, the applicant has shown several on the plans, but they do not show a sufficient number to meet that forty four spaces. Um, so the applicants are either going to need to request a variance or provide those spaces uh, on the site. The second is um, off-street parking spaces. The Princeton Code has a table requirement for parking spaces. It also uh, has a, a section that indicates that building types that are not classified in that uh, that table, uh, the applicant can propose uh, a required parking amount for the site. The applicant has indicated that the IAS doesn't uh, meet any of the categories of the site. It's an institution of higher learning. There is no parking requirement specifically for institution of higher learning. Um, so the applicant has indicated that the, the existing site has two hundred and seven parking spaces, and that, that is sufficient for the site. Um, Steph's opinion is that that's a reasonable assessment, but the traffic engineer for the municipality is here as well, um, if there's any comments on that. So those are the two things that I just wanted to point out before the applicant jumps into their presentation for the board to understand.
Okay. Good, thank you. Um, Mr. DeGrazia?
Yes.
Uh, let me just say, uh, the, uh, there's a panelist, Pete Chandler, whose hand has been up for some period of time. Is, is that person affiliated with the institute?
Yes, he is, um, and that's what I was going to start with. He can't activate his camera. It says the host, the host is blocking it.
Oh.
There you go.
Not on purpose. There we go. All right, thank you. Um, good, go ahead, Mr. DeGrazia.
Thank you. Um, for the record, my name is Christopher DeGrazia from the law firm of Figury, Drinker, Biddle, and Reath, here on behalf of the applicant Institute for Advanced Study. Um, thank you, Mr. Lesko, for your um, summary. Um, I think it pretty much covered a lot of the materials. Um, the application, as Mr. Lesko pointed out, is for essentially the preservation and renovation of an existing library. Um, the Institute for Advanced Study is a one-of-a-kind um, institution uh, dedicated to theoretical research and intellectual inquiry. Um, what it does is it, it fosters work of scholars from around the world in a very tranquil environmental setting. Um, many of the board members here and the public probably are well aware that the institute is also the steward of about five hundred and eighty-nine acres of area that they preserved. Everybody knows it locally as Institute Woods, which has a, a diversity of habitats, ecosystems, there's forested areas, farmlands, marshlands, the Stony Brook River runs through it, wetlands, and it has this trail system that's open to the public. So that's all part of the land that the Institute for Advanced Study owns. Um, the area that we are talking about is basically just northwest of um, that area, and if you, if you looked at the, the map Mr. Lesko showed, PB one, um, the campus itself, where the buildings are, are essentially just northwest of that preserved area. So we're talking about the main campus itself. Um, the the, the library building has had a leaky roof for as far back as anybody could remember. The building was built in nineteen sixties, but it's had this, this problem with leaks. Um, and I hope as you see our presentation this evening, you'll see that there's been a very thoughtful and sensitive approach to the existing library that's very respectful of the original design. So the consultants here and the institute has found a way to basically preserve and protect the original library. Um, so it didn't have to be demoed, and basically build mostly on top of it with another level that's well-integrated with the buildings in the area. So what you're going to see this evening has really small or very minimal impacts, um, essentially because it's built on areas that have already been um, disturbed or built upon. It's not expanding into the fields or any forested areas. Um, ultimately, it does even reduce impervious coverage by uh, about two thousand, six hundred and eighteen square feet. And it has, uh, it advances many sustainability, um, energy efficiency and green initiatives that we'll get into in a little bit, from tying it into a geothermal system to EV chargers, charging stations, which Mr. Lesko already mentioned. So there's a really, a lot of great elements about this very sensitive and thoughtful approach to this um, library addition. I guess, as you mentioned, Jerry, would you, Mr. Muller, would you like me to have all of our witnesses sworn in at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, so we have uh, Michael Sa- Sacone. Michael, you here? Oh, Jerry, do you want them to just list, do you want me to list their names or them to list their names, or how would you like me to do?
Well, I'll do it in a group. If, if all the people who are going to testify on behalf of the institute can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm their testimony that are about to give be the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could go around, and Peter, why don't we start with you? Uh, each of you, if you can give your full name and spell your last name.
Christopher, maybe you can, like, call people off, so there, it goes more efficiently.
Michael?
Michael Chacon, last name C I C C O N E.
Thank you.
Janine?
Janine Purcaro, last name P U R C A R O.
Here.
Peter Chandler, C H A N D L E R.
Thank you.
Martin?
Martin Kimmel, K I M M E L.
John?
John Nicehead, N is a Nancy, Y S T E D T.
George?
George Jacques Mar, J A C Q U E M A R T.
And Francis? Um, oh, she may be in the um. She's muted, she's, she's in, but she's muted. Okay.
Do it, try to do it again. Frances Halsband, H A L S B A N D.
Okay, that's the list.
Thank you.
Okay, so for our.
Sorry, excuse me. Um, Ms. Hals, is that H A L S? B A D A N D?
Yes, you've got it, right.
Okay, thank you.
So for our first witnesses, I would like to instru- um, introduce representatives of the Institute for Advanced Study. We have the Chief Facilities Officer, Michael Chacon, and we have Janine Purcaro, who's the chief operate, operating officer. Um, we've prepared a slide presentation of twenty-two slides that I would like to mark into the uh, record as A one. Yep. It's uh, it's on the website as well. We've, we've submitted it to the municipality. And um, our first, my first two witnesses will um, go through or bring up, let's bring up the, or actually, you could Janine or Michael, I'm not sure which one of you are going to start, but um, I guess, uh, yeah, let's bring that up. So this is marked as Exhibit A one, and this is uh, the same exact presentation that is online. I would say, though, that after we submitted it, we realized that we didn't have page numbers. So we've added numbers on the bottom, same slides, it's just easier to go through with the numbers visible. So um, Janine and Michael?
Great, thank you, Chris. Um, I'm Janine Purcaro. I'm the chief operating officer here at the Institute for Advanced Study. Um, and I'd like to just start uh, by thanking the members of the planning board for creating this special meeting to consider our project application tonight. Um, I'll be brief because you've already received many of the specific details of the actual construction project, and we'll hear from many of our experts uh, right after me, but wanted to share a little bit about what it will mean to those who work on our campus and why this project is important to us. I'm going to share a picture of the uh, library when it was first built in the nineteen sixties, so you have a, a view of, of what it looked like initially. Um, the institute's library renovation and expansion project represents our commit, commitment to the preservation of multiple values, architectural heritage of this campus, sustainability, and the research capacity of our scholars.
Ms.
As we.
Could you identify what slide you're on as you go through them?
Oh, sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we're looking at slide number two, which is the library at completion in nineteen sixty-five. As we explored ways of repairing and mitigating this roof that was leaking as early, I think, as nineteen sixty-seven, a couple of years after it was built, um, and the rest of the envelope issues that we have, such as single-pane windows and a failing exterior pavers around the library um, of our existing Historical Studies and Social Sciences library, it became clear that a one-for-one roof replacement wouldn't be a stable solution for this building. By building a second floor on it that preserves the architectural aesthetic and the visibility of the original building, we have the opportunity to meet critical space needs of our scholars and address some of the library's big issues. The main floor of the library, as Justin uh, described earlier, will be expanded over some of the existing exterior pavers that you can see in this picture. Um, many of those have finished space below, and that will solve many decades of water penetration issues into the library stacks that are below ground on the first level, the basement level of the library, and will create additional desired spaces for study and workrooms for the library staff. This also means that our librarians can spend time assisting scholars in locating research mysterious, materials and accessing the collections instead of running around the building covering bookshelf, bookshelving with plastic tarps every time there is a threat of rain. We'll also be gaining meeting rooms and collaborative spaces on the new second floor, which will be used to relocate scholars and staff that have been sharing offices or occupying modular office space, uh, depending on the year. Team meeting rooms and workspaces in shapes and configurations unlike any we presently have on our campus will allow scholars to work more collaborati- elaboratively across fields in a new center for collaborative research. By proposing this project instead of a new stand-alone building, we're also striving to conserve our campus lands. As Chris said earlier, you know, just under six hundred acres of our eight hundred-plus acres of our campus are permanently preserved um, and maintained by the Institute for the enjoyment of not only our scholars, but the broader Princeton community. Um, and those woods are cherished by not only our scholars, um, but everyone else, but that leaves us with very little, little, buildable land left on our campus. It also allows us to continue to move forward our sustainable campus goals by dramatically improving the energy efficiency of the current library structure. The renovated library will use, utilize less energy to operate than the current structure, even with the addition of another floor. By substantially reducing heat loss and cooling needs, it will also dramatically reduce nighttime light pollution. The use of these newer energy-efficient building materials in the project as we're proposing, and our conversion to geothermal heating and cooling on our academic campus back in two thousand and twenty-one are the primary reasons why such a large addition will not add to energy use. We also talked a minute ago about the EV charging stations that will be added uh, to the existing parking area to the west of the library. We currently have a number of other EV chargers across our campus for the use of those who live and work here. Um, they're also part of our larger strategy of reducing the use of fossil fuels. We've been converting many of our work vehicles on our campus to electric um, as part of this larger plan of ours. So in short, this project is about preservation for us. It preserves the use of the original library, its research environment, which is cherished, and its collections, including rare books and manuscripts, which are constantly under threat from possible leaking. It also preserves our land by focusing on building up and not out. The renovation and reduction of the existing impervious pavers will actually reduce the overall amount of impervious surface that the original structure had, and will reinstate some green space. And it's going to preserve our ability to foster research and discovery. Uh, but it's going to provide a space unlike any other on our campus today where scholars from different schools and disciplines can actually come together for discovery in spaces that are designed for that. So in closing, I just want to thank the committee again. We truly appreciate the consideration of our application by the town this evening.
And before, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure if Michael has anything else to add, but I have one follow-up question. Based on how you described uh, the facility, um, is there going to be any type of increase of either members or staff based on this expansion?
So we are presently looking at relocating people that we, I mentioned uh, briefly in my comments that we have in mobile office uh, trailers right now. We call them the modular office space. Um, they're temporary trailers. We have um, many mathematicians that use those spaces uh, for their permanent offices, and they feel kind of like second-class citizens in that space. Um, and so we will be relocating some of them. We also have a number of, of retired faculty. Uh, most of our retired faculty in many schools are, are able to keep their offices long after they, you know, retire from the institute and continue living and working in this area for many decades to come, many of them into their nineties. But that's not the case in some of our schools, and some of our schools, there's a space uh, constraining where faculty, after they retire, are only guaranteed. where faculty, after they retire, are only guaranteed an office for a handful of years instead of the number of years that they might, uh, wish to consider to work on campus. So we'll be relocating some of the scholars that are either in mobile spaces, doubled up, or not able to have offices. And then in addition in this space, we're creating these collaborative meeting rooms in sizes and configurations that we don't have anywhere else. So those won't be adding new people, you know, to the campus. They will be just providing spaces where, um, our scholars who come here on a regular basis can work.
Right. Thank you. Um, Michael, did you have anything else to add or?
Me, I don't have anything to add to that.
Oh, okay. Great.
Thank you.
Uh, I guess Michael's will be here if there's any specific questions, um, with regard to the operations of the existing facility.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Cohen has a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I need to follow up with, uh, Ms. Percaro because the statement about, um, retired faculty
Mm-hmm.
who currently in some of your schools don't have space on campus to continue working if they wish to do so, that sounds like there's potential that you do have some increase in the campus, um, population uh, over what the current campus population would be, and that's a little different than what we read in our staff report. So I just, I'd like you to clarify that. Uh, it goes to the question of parking.
Sure. We, uh, the, I, I didn't, so they, they don't have offices here anymore, but that doesn't mean that they're not here every day and maybe using a table in the library or another space. Um, you know, sitting in someone else's office, et cetera, to work. So many of our faculty, even if they don't have offices here, um, who've retired, um, and there's, you know, only a handful that are in the Historical Studies, uh, School of Historical Studies that live near campus, um, that don't have a, a regular office here. Um, if they, you know, they're typically here anyway, um, but they just have to keep a lot of their books and things at home. So um, it wouldn't be adding additional people coming to campus. It just would provide them a space to work, a dedicated.
Thanks for it. Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome.
For that. There's no further questions. We'll move on.
So. Yes, go, go right ahead. I don't see any other hands up.
Okay, our next, uh, slide is page three, and this is just the introduction slide for our Civil Engineer, Peter Chandler. Peter, um, we've had you, uh, sworn in, but I would like to have you qualified. Um, if you could give us a little bit about your education and licensing, that would be great.
Sure. Uh, good, uh, good evening, folks. Uh, my name's Peter Chandler. I'm here as the Civil Engineering Representative for the project, uh, from Penone Associates. Uh, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing for almost twenty-five years now. Uh, I got a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from New Jersey Institute, Institute of Technology. And again, I've been licensed since two thousand and one.
And, and your license is current?
Yes, it is.
Have you testified before boards before?
Yes, I have.
We, we'd like to offer him as an expert.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so if we could forward to slide four. And Peter, if you could take us through, um, what this is.
Yeah, sure. Uh, so, uh, what you're looking at here is a sheet of the civil, uh, Civil Engineering Plan Set that was submitted to the township as part of the application. This is Sheet CE2 of the set. It's entitled "The Overall Site Plan." And what I've done on the exhibit is I've highlighted, uh, for everyone's convenience, the limits of the property and the limits of the project site. Uh, the limits of the property are shown in blue. Uh, I did, uh, make one small error that I want to point out, uh, for members of the board and the audience. There is a little fingerling on the northern part of the site that extends up to Battle Creek Road, uh, Battle Road. Uh, I excluded that from the blue when I highlighted it. Uh, and again, the project area where the library and the plaza is are shown in the red. As you can see, um, and the site, uh, is identified as Block one zero five zero one, Lot one point zero three in the municipality. It's comprising of sixty-nine point zero two acres in area. It's zoned in the E2 Educational and Multifamily Residential District. It's bounded on the north by Battle Road, on the east by Olden Lane, on the south by Trolley Trail, Trolley Track Trail, and on the west by Goodell and Maxwell Lanes. It has multiple, uh, paths of access into the site. Primary one being Einstein Drive off of Olden Lane, which has two points of access. It can also be accessed via Battle Road to the north and Maxwell Lane on the west. There is a tributary of Stony Brook along the western, uh, side of the property. And there is Institute Pond in the southwestern corner of the property, south of the library building. Uh, what we're proposing to do for the, uh, we want to switch to the next exhibit. Okay, what you're looking at here is the, uh, site plan of the civil set that was submitted to the township. That's Sheet number CE4.
And it highlights. Oh, I'm sorry. Just, uh, just slide number five for the.
Slide number five. It highlights the areas of improvement that are proposed for the facility. Uh, indicates the areas of the addition to the building for both the, the basement, the first floor, and the second floor. It also highlights the improvements made to the ADA access into the building. And it should be noted, uh, as well as the changes that are being made to the plaza at the rear of the facility on the east side. Uh, it should be noted that the EV spaces that were being designated to be added for the project at the so- at the southeastern corner of the parking lot are, have been, re- are being re- proposed to be relocated up, uh, closer to the ADA spaces i- in response to one of the technical comments that we received. We're also going to be adding some striping at the access driveway on the northwest corner of the library to prevent anyone from parking and blocking access to the new ADA curb cut. Again, in response to a technical comment.
Um, be- before you advance the slide, um, can you just walk us through where the basement addition, the first floor addition, and then the second floor addition are? I understand they're shown on this plan, but it's a little small for us to be able to read that.
Yeah, so, uh, okay, no problem. Um, the, there's a uh, multi-story addition being made along the western face of the building, which faces the parking lot. Um, that's for both the first and the second floor. And also, uh, where the stairwell is, which is the bump out, uh, there on the western facade of the building, that will encompass some of the basement area that's gonna be improved. Along the sou- the southern facade of the building, there again, uh, it's expanding both the first and the second floor. And there's a small area on the eastern facade of the building that is going to be an expansion to the first floor only. The outline.
And then the second floor addition is over the entire, what, what?
The, the second floor is encompassing the western facade and the southern facade of the building. The areas that are cross-hatched on the exhibit.
Hmm, okay.
And last, either, lastly, the, uh, the, the patio area uh, on the eastern side of the building is being reduced, as was previously testified to, which will reduce the overall impervious coverage on the site.
Okay. I'm still a little confused, but maybe when we get to the, uh, 3D renderings, you can, uh, give a little bit more.
I'm sure the architect in his testimony can, you know, probably, uh, uh, expand upon, uh, my testimony.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so that concludes my testimony for the evening.
Okay, are there any, uh, questions from board members for, or from staff, uh, for Mr. Chandler? Let's see, uh, Justin, Lesko?
Uh, yes, uh, and thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the applicant might address this later, but there was a mention of, uh, change in the ADA and EV spaces. I was wondering if he could go into more details about what that means.
Sure. Um, so on the plans, um, there's a note in the southwestern corner where we were gonna designate the addition of four additional EV spaces. We received a comment that, uh, suggested that those spaces would be better served, better serve the facility if they were located up adjacent to where the ADA spaces are now. So basically sliding them up to the other end of the non-ADA spaces. And one of those spaces will also function as a handy, uh, where the handicap space is now, so that'll be provided with uh, an electric charging station.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I understand, uh, uh, from the reports that there's no change in the, um, flow of, of stormwater. I know that we have a reduction in impervious coverage, but I just wonder if you could talk a little bit about where the reduction is in the impervious coverage and also uh, how stormwater runoff from the existing building uh, occurs and how stormwater from the new addition portions will be handled as well.
Uh, sure. Uh, I'll address the components of that, um, that I can. Uh, I think the architect might be better suited to address some of the comments directly, uh, directed towards, uh, the building components. But overall, um, the, the reduction in the impervious is primarily coming um, from the reduction in the footprint of the patio surface to the east of the building. Uh, you can see on the drawing, we left both the pre-end post outlines, um, shown. And, uh, it's essentially, whereas before it was more of a rectangular shape, uh, or I guess in the current condition, it's more of a rectangular shape. Uh, in the pu- in the post-proposed condition, it's going to be, uh, narrowed at the southern end and, uh, stepped out, as you can see, um, as you proceed, you know, from, uh, south to north. And there was also previously, uh, three, uh, or I'm sorry, four areas where, uh, pavers were not located and there's trees. Um, that's being replaced with a multitude of smaller lawn airb- uh, lawn areas um, that are shown on the plan here.
Okay.
Uh, the site is primarily gonna drain.
About the stormwater? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. The, the, the plan is, uh, primarily to maintain the existing, uh, stormwater flow patterns. Uh, everything is going to proceed radially away from the building to the east, south, and west, and, uh, again, it's, it's, it's maintaining the current pa- uh, current drainage patterns.
The surface flow?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, uh, Mr. Lesko and then Mr. Anosoke. I'm sorry, Anosuke. Sorry.
Uh, Madam Chair, I forgot to take my hand down from before.
Okay. Victor?
Yes, um, the, the question, I, 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 my comments really were on those two, uh, items you addressed, the ADAs, uh, moving the EV uh, closer to the ADA spot. Um, I don't know that you necessarily have to move all of it, but at least one should be the ADA spot, but if you choose to move for the whole four closer there, that's fine. Uh, I was just wondering, the other comment I had was the accessible route. Uh, you just have this little concrete pad from the ADA spot uh, parking space just to the driveway. Is there any consideration to continue it all the way down? It just looks a little uh, tacky, if you want to say that.
Uh, I'm, are you referring to the sidewalk, sir?
Yes. If you wanna call it si- yeah, sidewalk.
And extending that south along the edge of the parking?
Yes, all the parking, all the way to the da- out to the end.
Okay, uh, no problem. Um, so that, uh, element was not, uh, worked into the design. We were focusing on, uh, maintaining our green initiative with the facility, um, and minimum thereby, you know, component of those initiatives is to minimize our impervious surface. So we wanted to provide, uh, obviously, the ADA accessible route that was needed, and we also extended the sidewalk up to where the deliveries are made, uh, you know, when they have the infrequent deliveries of books and supplies to the library. So, um, we did not consider extending it down. Um, the, the traffic flow for this facility, as the traffic consultant will attest to later in the hearing, um, is, is extremely low. Um, it's, it's a very, uh, unique facility, and the traffic flow in and out of it is unique as well. Um, so we didn't believe it presented any material, uh, hazard for drivers that park in those spaces to walk either on the grass or, uh, on the pavement surface up to where the accessible route is shown on the plans.
So I, I just wanna make clear a couple of elements here because we did, we did take a close look at this. This facility is not like a typical library where it's open to the public. So there's, there's no public that is allowed in the facility. It doesn't have any type of tours or anything like that. The, it's for the members. They, they will be parking and using these spaces long-term, and there's not a lot of pedestrian movement in the direction, um, from that lower area. So you basically have, what is it, one, two, three, you know, four rows of parking in a lot that doesn't have a lot of turnover. Um, given that and that most just, you know, will walk across towards the entrance and that there isn't an entrance below, we felt that it, it wasn't necessarily to put it, and it would add impervious coverage that we really don't want to add. Um, so we thought it wasn't, it, it wasn't a safety issue because of the, you know, the number of, um, you know, the, the, the chip, trip generation and the unique nature of it not being open to the public. These are all members that will be parking there and staff.
Okay.
Okay. I understand.
Can members park there? Uh, members are a different classification. They're not staff. They're not, uh, faculty. Uh, they, they just pay a fee and they call members and they can go eat there. Can members, can members exit the, access the library?
Well, I'll, I'll let, um.
Can I jump in?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And that's.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have, um, so we have a term that has been used at the institute since the beginning of time for our scholars that are not faculty. We call them members. And I, that's what Chris was talking about. I think what you're referring to um, is Friends of the Institute, which we all can, also consider members of our community.
Right, okay.
So there are donors to the institute who live, you know, in the Princeton area that we, you know, there's different Friends levels of giving, um, that you can give to the institute at certain levels, and that, you know, opens up the dining hall to you, you know, if you would like to come here and have lunch or, you know, meet with scholars or go to lectures, et cetera. And so that, that parking lot is open for the people who are part of the Friends, um, membership, don- donor group. Um, and largely, we see them just at lunchtime if they're gonna come or to the gourmet dinner on a Friday night.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and I appreciate you bringing up that point, Mr. Anosuke, um, because logic, I, you know, just looking at the way the parking lot is laid out and where you'd expect most people to park, et cetera, y- you would think that there would be, you know, maybe even a pervious surface, uh, um, uh, you know, walkway there. And I, I think that it's been explained, you know, reasonably that that, that it's, they honestly don't think that it's needed, but I do think that it's worth y'all taking another a look at the way the, the parking lot is used and will be used, especially after the, um, addition of the new um, uh, handicap spaces and, um, and EV charging, and whether or not you might want to extend a sidewalk, um, you know, down that line of, um, of park, that first. Um, of park, that first, uh, row of parking. I, I'm not suggesting that that's something, I, I don't, I don't know how other board members feel about it, I'm not, I'm not. Saying that I feel strongly about making it a condition or anything, I just think it's worth your considering. Um, are there other questions for?
And Madam Chair, I just wanted to just clarify, based on the other comment, we're relocating all those by the entrance, so. They're gonna be up to the top where everybody would just walk straight in. So it's not down at the bottom where, you know, if you had a lot of people using electric charging stations, maybe. Utilizing that more, now we shifted everything right by where the ramp is to go in.
Hmm, okay.
Uh, and Madam Chair, might I add that, um, if after this library is built, if that's not a condition of approval, uh, which doesn't sound like you're going that way. Um, the institute could always come back and file an administrative waiver if they find that they'll need. You know, uh, if there are those desire lines that kind of dirt paths that form, uh, which it looks like they haven't. Through the existing, uh, uh, situation. Uh, but they always could come back in and file an administrative waiver if they find that they need those.
Hmm, great, thank you for that. Okay, um, Mr. DeGresia, who's next?
Yes, that brings us to our architect. So. Martin, you there, Kimmel?
I am here, hello.
Great, so we had you sworn in already, I would like to get you qualified, can you tell us a little bit about your education, expertise and licensing?
Yes, um, so again, I'm Martin Kimmel, I'm the president of Kimmel Book Red Architects, which I founded some twenty-nine years ago. I am licensed currently in eleven states, we are active at least in nine states. I have been admitted as an expert in all of those states in front of boards. Uh, and things, and I've also, uh, served and been, uh, admitted as an expert. In, uh, many, many courts as an expert witness for various types of construction related. Uh, issues that go before the courts, uh, I am a. Uh, member of the National Council of Architectural Accreditation Boards in addition to. My AIA designation, which is a national, um, certification that allows me to be certified and licensed in any state. Uh, with, with, just by paying the fee, um, to join that, so.
Just a quick word about your education?
So, I, I kind of hop right over that, didn't I? Uh, yes, I, I, I received many moons ago. Uh, a Bachelor of Architecture degree, uh, which is the five-year professional degree and, and that was my, uh, education.
Okay, thank you, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
So we're gonna page forward to slide seven. On A1, slide seven, and you can start your, your, um, testimony, please.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that, so this, we wanted to give you a little, uh, more on the condition of the building and how the idea of, of this project came to light. Uh, and Janine did a, I think a fabulous job and sold some of my best material frankly, uh, about the existing building, but. The short of it is, it's, it's a pretty flat modernist building, what you cannot see in this photos is there are several thousand feet. Of concrete cast in place barrel vault skylights on top of that flat roof that you see before you. And they are single glazed and they have leaked light out, air out, heat out. And water in since their birth, they were a, a very interesting idea. Uh, that was maybe before its time or should have never had its time, it does create though a delightful, um. Lighting of the main floor of the library, if you've ever been in there, and that was really the design idea. And so the institute from the time we got involved wanted to preserve that effect in the reading room. Uh, because it's, it's just, it's really what the design is all about, um, and you could argue the merits of other parts of the design. At any rate, at the same time, we were looking at the ability to repair that. Knowing that we're just going to have to fix it again and again, it's like one of those things that you can put money in, fix it, it will fail, you fix it, it will fail. Uh, at the same time, the institute identified the need for the additional offices and the collaborative space that Janine mentioned. And there was sort of a kind of eureka moment of like, well, what if we built the new square footage we needed? Over top of this failing roof and skylights. Uh, which then allows the things that she mentioned to happen, which is we don't have to develop further land. We preserve the building and we create a permanent fix to the roof because it's no longer the roof. Uh, the design as it is, is going to be built, uh, with your approval and, and all that. Um, we'll have an interstitial space between the new floor and that existing roof that will allow us. To with artificial LED lighting to project light through those skylights and preserve. The effect as it is now, which is a pretty, pretty interesting thing, um, it will also. Um, I'm gonna talk some more about the features and I'll show you how the design, uh, emits in one second, is. The building currently consumes so much energy to stay warm and cool. That with the addition of the square footage that, uh, you already noted of twenty-three thousand new square feet. Will reduce the overall energy consumption of this building by some thirty percent. And that's a, if you talk about green initiatives, that's a pretty amazing one in its own right, so very important, so this is the before. Um, and, and if you go to the next slide, please. Um, and that is no longer lined up, so our first slide was from the, I guess it is, I, my apology, um, my slide is minimized here. At any rate, so, uh, we spent a great deal of time looking at modern history. And how we could add a second floor to the building, and you can obviously see that. Uh, that looks new, which is important, it doesn't want to fake and mimic the old, but it has to be respectful. Of the lines, it has to be respectful of the geometry, uh, and we were able to do that and you see that, um, in the design before you. So that provides the new square footage on top, if you look to the far left of that slide. You will see, um, that we're able to provide some much-needed circulation, there's a really tiny elevator. Uh, in the building now, which would not serve, so we're able to get a better entrance and circulation to that second floor space at the left. Um, and, you know, when we get into the landscape testimony, um, later. Uh, you will have seen in the photos prior that the original design of the plaza was a treeless plaza with like one signature tree and then over time lindens were planted. And it's kind of a, a, a treeed up area, our hope is to kind of restore that plaza to more of what it, it originally was, which is, is kind of more open. Uh, as part of, and, and part of the reason the lindens, uh, are proposed to be removed and they're also kind of end of life anyway. So I can pause if there's any questions on that slide before we advance to the next.
Could I ask a question about the vaulted ceilings and I guess that would be slide seven, I, I don't understand how that works. It's a flat roof, so where are the vaulted ceilings?
So Christopher, if you were to hop down into one of those extra slides that we have. Um, that show the design of that, because unfortunately that didn't end up in the, in the top here, that might be very helpful to you. To seek, oh, okay.
In, it, it, it added to our, um, twenty-two slides, we had some extra. Uh, optional slides in case there were questions, so this is slide twenty-five, it's all there, um, this is slide twenty-five. Of A1 because, um, uh, if you're considering the additional slides as well, so this is sheet, uh, slide twenty-five, basically.
So, and I, I'm gonna, this is gonna be complicated, but I'm gonna do my best, uh, to answer your question, so if you look in the upper right, you'll see there's. Uh, these curved vaulted things, this is a section that is cut through the roof of that building. What you see from the outside is a big white beam, which is kind of the, the angled lines behind it. Behind those beams on the entire roof is, is built of these curved barrel vault. And you can see that they have, um, there's, there's fixed glass that are pointed to, and then basically there's these gutters. Um, that are created by the vaults and of course they are impossible, uh, to keep from leaking over time. In addition to, it's everything's single glazed, does that help explain it?
Yeah, it does for me, thank you.
And again, and there are many, many, many of those, so when you look from the inside, that's a great photo, you can see some of the. Yes, the, the water trapping that has gone on to catch it, uh, you can see the kind of delightful look from the inside that you get, but, um. You can, you can kind of see what they've been facing, uh, over these many years. Is it, okay, that good enough?
Thank you, yeah, it's fine for me.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, right, with this, we have a few more views, so this is as seen from the main campus, so the parking lot that we have, uh, been talking about in previous testimony. Is actually behind this photo, so if you look where the building is, that parking lot is down below behind. And this is the part that faces the main part of campus, uh, that you would access as a pedestrian. So one of the com- uh, commentary was where, where do the people come from? The overwhelming bulk of people that are going to this building come on foot to this side of the building and they enter campus that way. Much, much, much of the parking that is, is just back behind this building. Serves general campus use and people are not necessarily coming to this building, that's one of the reasons why we didn't over emphasize that entrance. But we are using the building to create an accessible way to get from that lower parking. To this upper level, uh, which currently does not exist, okay?
So there's a passageway between the back and the front where you don't have to access any rooms?
And you can just. Yes, you can come through, there's a, there's an entrance and a stair and then you can, you can walk down through the building and then come up an elevator. Uh, to get to any of these other levels or to get onto campus, and of course you can walk all the way around, uh, another building to get there as well, but. It's a much, it's a significant improvement.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, next slide, please.
And this is slide nine.
All right, so this slide is as seen from the east side of the campus, so this sort of faces largely open space with the pond to the left. The main campus to the right, and then, uh, the parking again is behind the building in this, in this setup. And I'll let you go to the rendering, all right? So you can just sort of see how that, um, it opens up as you would come around the building, and there's not a whole lot to add here. All right, uh, an important view that, uh, if you're out in the, in the wooded area or you're at the pond. Um, the bill, the original design of the building kind of opened to the pond and really to collect those kind of views. And, um, you can see that we've respected that approach and in the next view.
So this is slide eleven, and now we're on slide twelve.
Okay, so slide twelve says the two original floors that open up, now mind you, what you're seeing here very clearly is we are replacing. Uh, almost the entire envelope of the existing building, so all of the single pane glass windows that are also a problem will be replaced as part of this. And new thermally broken, um, you know, high quality, uh, fenestration will be, will be included, that's, you know, one of our small but important green initiatives. Uh, we are restoring the original teak wood exterior, um, for that, and then we are matching that, um, on the floor up above. And really trying to be respectful of the materials and the colors, uh, that were, have been there since nineteen sixty-five.
Can I just quickly ask, is the, the lower level, um. Uh, virtually the same footprint as the upper level of the existing?
Yes.
So even though it's got just this one exposure, uh, with windows out, it's, it's a full floor?
That's correct, so the bulk of that floor is a more storage and mechanical space. The front leading edge of it does have occupiable space and, and, um, does get quite a bit of use. And it opens out onto the lawn level, which is, is a really nice feature there.
Great. Um, does that conclude your testimony, Mr. Kimmel? Or do you have more?
Christopher, I forget if I have another slide, I apologize for that. Yeah, so I have some technical, I have a technical slide here for you that just sort of shows that, and this is, I apologize for how difficult this is to read. But really, we were just trying to make sure we demonstrated that we meet all the height and area, you know, uh, obligations, uh, we are. Currently existing roof is, is twenty-five feet, um, on. The south side, which is the high side of the building and fifteen feet on the low side, the one-story side. Uh, we are forty-two feet roughly, um, with this, the additional floor on the high side and thirty-two, which is well below your required. Or your maximum height restriction for this site. And is in keeping it with scale of other buildings on the campus for sure, in fact, right now, if anything, it's a little bit of a flat-ish building, so it might fit a little better, some might argue.
Okay.
And I believe that concludes his testimony.
Thank you.
Our next witness will be our landscape architect unless there's some questions.
Me, yeah, or, uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I, I, I have a practical question. Having been impressed with the problems that this building reflected from the very beginning. And looking at the very impressive and very, to me, simplistically, modernistic. Uh, recommendations for the program, the pro- project today, my question is, how is it? That an entity of the state of New Jersey. Suggested that this building should be designated eligible for historic preservation. And if that's the case, was this any consideration whatsoever in any of the thinking that goes into today's presentation? Proposal?
Mr. Lesko?
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to jump in there, so when the, uh, State Preservation Office looked in two thousand and six, they looked at the whole campus. For a potential nomination, I don't believe they specifically, uh, you know, uh, addressed this building. Uh, so really the process would have been, if that was then acted upon, they would have looked into individual buildings and said what was contributing, what was non-contributing. Um, although that being said, uh, some things that are hard to maintain might end up. Uh, you know, getting caught in the middle of that, um. But there's no specific designation on this building according, or, or even opinion, uh, as far as I know on this building.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Yeah, that being said, um, certainly, um. Scholars, uh, of historical significance have done historically significant work. In that building, I mean, so we're looking at it from that perspective, um, you know, it certainly has a, a, an, an important. History as does the entire campus, um, but I'm not just, I'm not saying any, I'm not in any way meaning to contradict, uh. Uh, Justin Lesko, I'm just pointing out that it's, um, um. You know, context.
Hmm, uh, agreed completely, um, but part of the reason I do bring up the kind of, that there are really no. Historic regulations is because the institute could walk into this building tomorrow and pull a demolition permit. And take down this building, you know, um, without any of those regulations, obviously that's not what they're doing and they're looking to keep it. Uh, and, and build onto it and fix some of the issues, so, um, I, I think that's a, you know, should be noted.
Yeah, that's great.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to comment that. Uh, I think the engineering zoning report indicated also that there was, they took a look at the states. Um, there's some kind of a listing of, I don't know if it's all the buildings in the state, but. Uh, it's called a Lucy index, and that. Index did specifically say that this build, this specific building had not been reviewed or not examined. Is that right, Justin? That's what I saw in the report, yeah. So I, I just wanted to make that comment, and, and also, Jack, you know, just from a standpoint of, um. You know, any building that's older than fifty years old can be, uh, designated as historic, and this one. Certainly has some interesting features from the architectural period in which it was built in. I actually appreciated Mr. Kimmel's, uh, comments about how they tried to tie the addition to the, um. The original and especially preserve the interior, um. Uh, design features which were really the design concept behind the building to begin with, so they're, they're really, they're. Preserving the aesthetic experience while solving some of the climate change related problems.
And you might want, before you start doing work, to document all the ways that the brilliant people who. Uh, occupy that building have figured out, uh, water flow dynamics and how to capture water and then. That alone could be, could be an interesting, uh, um, exhibit of some sort. Uh, Mr. Lesko, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, yes, and I don't want to talk too much, but just to follow up on Mr. Cohen's comments, uh, in some ways, this is actually a very similar. Uh, situation to what the board heard last week, uh, about the, you know, seventeen hundreds house next to the Stony Brook. With water affecting it, um, you know, here we just have a nineteen sixties built library with water affecting it as our storms are getting. Uh, more and more intense, more and more frequent. with water affecting it as our storms are getting, uh, more and more intense, more and more frequent. And I, I think, you know, it's going to be a balancing act, uh, particularly, you know, historic buildings, um, be it because of their architecture, because of who was in them, or, or, you know, their place in important events. Um, so, you know, it's an unfortunate thing, but I, I think that's the reality that we're seeing in many different ways right now.
Uh, Mr. Cohen?
I just cannot resist the opening that you gave for one of my favorite architect stories. It may be appropriate, but supposedly Frank Lloyd Wright, when accused that many of his roofs leaked, uh, responded, if your roof doesn't leak, your architect was not creative enough. Mr. Kimmel, you can use that if you.
Absolutely. I mean, he's obviously the same person who did falling water, which is wonderful, but it would have fallen down eventually if it wasn't, uh, uh, engine, re-engineered by, by others many years later.
Okay, moving on.
Okay. Yes, that's, let's get our landscape architect. John?
Yes. Hi, Chris.
How are you? Uh, we had you sworn in already, but, um, if you can go through your education licensing and experience.
Sure, I'm a licensed landscape architect in New Jersey. And I've served as an expert witness in New Jersey. I got my degree in landscape architecture, technically an environmental studies, uh, degree with landscape architecture focus, and I've been practicing since 1981.
Excellent.
Thank you. We, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you. So let's turn, turn to slide 15. And it would be helpful if you can take us through what we're seeing and the landscaping plan.
Sure. So I will be jumping around a little bit and then come back to this plan. Uh, I'll be discussing the plaza design and landscape design issues, including the challenges of the existing conditions. And we'll touch on the history of the plaza a little bit. Martin already mentioned how it was an open plaza in 1965 when the building was first built. Uh, the submission provides a plaza and landscape to meet project goals. These goals include fixing the paving, which requires removal, replacement. It's gone bad. I can explain a little bit more later. Uh, providing a plaza that accommodates events as well as, uh, places for seating and walking through, uh, looking to re-envision the plaza as an outdoor space, being deferential to both the original 1965 plaza design of the architect, which was an open terrace and being deferential to the aesthetics of the Linden Grove, which was added later. Additional goals are to accommodate and highlight the pedestrian routes, reduce impervious coverage and to preserve the large heritage Linden that is just northeast of our site. It's in a light green line off to the upper right on that plan, very large, quite amazing. So if we could move to slide 17, the first challenge is that the pave, 17, yeah. Yeah, I knew I tricked you. The first challenge is that the paving has been greatly degr, been degraded by aging. Uh, but that degradation is also partly due to the Linden roots, which has spread under the concrete, slightly heaving the paving and those, and those in some areas causing tripping hazards. This heaving has also caused puddling and that puddling can freeze and be a slip hazard. The puddling and overall poor drainage has also degraded the pavement through freezing, freeze and thaw action when the water sits and gets in the joints. So upper left, you can see where the, it, you can see just a little bit where the paving next to the trees is higher. And that's what, what's happening is roots are getting under the pavement and deforming it. It causes the water to stop. And then along the west edge of the plaza, uh, in the lower left photo, uh, we need to access the second floor facade and the roof perimeter. The contractor needs to access that to work on it. So some tree removal is required there. The trees just to the east, to the right of that are actually some of the worst trees. So once we take out some trees to get to the roof, then what we're left is some of the more ugly trees. And they, all the interior ones are very thin. Um, and also some of them are declining as, as you can see in the lower right. So they're quite packed in there and they're all fighting for space. And they're having trouble in there, but it is a beloved grove of Lindens. But we're going to have to impact them unfortunately. Um, given the difficulties with the Lindens and the project goals, uh, this submission proposes a re-envision plaza. So if we could go to slide 16 backwards, uh, there's a little picture in the upper center, the dark one. Um, we had a, a nicer picture early in the presentation. So the 1965, it was an open plaza with lawn panels and a pool and a sculpture. And there was actually a Linden planted back then too. You can barely see it. So we labeled it. Um, the original, uh, it was, uh, a wide open space. And then in the seventies, it was planted with the Lindens. And the plaza was reconfigured just a little bit, but many of those trees were put in too close to the edges of pavements and over time they caused a problem. When, if we could go to slide 15 now. So we are proposing new trees in that plaza that help create a space which is deferential to the original 1965 open plaza design. But the, the Lindens are such an iconic item right now that when you look at it from the northeast and from the north, we wanted to preserve the look of having some trees. So we decided to use trees that help embrace the site, make it feel like a site, but also from the outside are reminiscent of the Linden Grove. Uh, the honey locusts have a few, we've chosen honey locusts for those trees. They have a few advantages over the Linden. It's a European species. The honey locust is a native cultivar, has roots that don't heat pavements typically and provide light shade, which is good for growing plants or lawn below. The institute has struggled with growing lawn and vinca under the Lindens. The heritage Linden off to the right is the same species and very happy, but when is stuffed in, they were too stuffed in in this plaza. We would consider using a diversity of trees instead of the honey locust, but then the design would lose some of the reference to the uniformity of the Linden Grove. So we prefer to leave them as all honey locusts. Overall, the seven honey locusts don't detract from the overall diversity provided by the project trees and campus trees. There was also a comment asking if some of the Lindens in good condition could be saved within the new plaza. Uh, so we looked at that. There's only three that could be possibly saved if they're in a reasonable position along the right side. Um, but they would be, when you take out trees out of a, a bosque, out of a grove, they tend to be misshapen. So it would tend to look a little funny to leave three trees there and then plant with new trees. There are two more trees that are right where it says lawn there, right in the middle, where it says lawn in the center panel. A little further down there, um, trees 39 and 41 that sit in the middle of the event space. So we don't think we should leave those. So the previous trees I talked about on the right side were 42, 43 and 44. But given that the design goal is uniformity of trees for the rows of honey locusts, we don't recommend saving any of the Lindens in the new plan and don't recommend, uh, mixing new ones and old ones here.
Although, uh, John, there is the one honey, uh, the one, uh, Linden that we are preserving, the large one.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, we, it's very high priority to save that. We are not doing any grading under the drip line of that tree. We're putting up fencing, we're protecting it. The plaza paving will be upgraded to a bluestone or similar paver. The paving pattern and paving layout accommodate and highlight the main access routes from the upper right and from the north and lead toward, uh, the two main doors, which are, aren't on this diagram. The lawn panels in the plaza help reduce the impervious coverage while providing a large gathering area for an event. And including the paved areas, we're providing a, a 50 foot by a hundred foot event area minimum. There was a comment from the Princeton, from the Princeton Review letter package asking if this lawn could be replaced with diverse species. And though we can't do that, where lawn will be used for events, uh, we can add some perennials or grasses in the three northern lawn squares. Yeah, the, the three above that one. Yep. North of the building, uh, will be disturbed, will be disturbed, um, by the construction access. It's an ivy bed and we are planning to replace the ivy. Uh, there is a large bed of ivy already there, north of that bed, and it crawls underneath the bridge. So we won't be able to stop that ivy from getting into our bed. It's just a losing battle. I personally have to face that at my house. It, it takes too much effort of herbicides and weeding to try to keep it out. So we have decided it is, it is an invasive species, but it won't go beyond this area. So we are replanting the ivy in that area. So we can just replace what's there. Uh, as a side note, oh, go ahead.
Well, I, I, I really flagged that as a, just a terrible idea. And I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I would, you know, when your testimony is done, I'd like to hear uh, from Dan Dobromilsky about, um, you know, ways to install some kind of barrier and then plant a different, um, native ground cover, because you're talking about adding, I don't know, like what, 4,000 uh, English ivy plants, which just, you know, makes my hair stand on end. And those trees, it just endangers everything around it. It's really bad stuff.
Yeah. So I would be, I would love to give you suggestions. So we can put a barrier in and that'll stop the roots. It will crawl about five feet a year. So it's a maintenance issue for the institute. You can't stop it from crawling over the top. I would love to put all natives in there. They would absolutely. So we just need a commitment from the institute to keep natives, to keep the ivy out of there. Well, I would be thrilled to switch it.
Yeah, but, but American, uh, some native Pachysandra or some, um, sedge or, you know, something.
That's right. Yeah, we could put in sedges and a mixed, a mix, the Pacora arae, sorry, speaking Latin, golden groundsel. Things that just would do so well. So.
Yeah, yeah.
I personally.
Well, I, I don't mean to speak for the board, but I, but I noted that the, um, um, Environmental Commission also flagged that. And I do think that it's, it's definitely a change that I, I personally would like to see as a condition. Um, and I hate to lose, uh, you know, mature trees, as you mentioned, but I'm glad to see, you know, if the Lindens have to go, they are non-native trees. They offer absolutely minimal habitat value and you're replacing them with, uh, with native trees that do offer habitat value. I, when I was looking at the comments about, um, uh, more diversity in the tree plantings, what jumped out at me was the 17 sycamores, you know, that may, and I don't know where, I guess they're going elsewhere on the property. Uh, but I assumed that, that that was, you know, there's 17 sycamores and one willow oak. Maybe fewer sycamores and, and more, uh, oak trees, other trees that absorb a ton of water and have enormous, uh, uh, habitat value for birds and, and pollinators. So just to.
I'll let.
Bring that out there.
That's good. I'll let the institute speak to that because, uh, that, those selections were by the institute. Some of those have already been planted. So the institute is more, I, I received that list from the institute to help balance out the trees that are needed this, for this project. So we'll have to have.
So somebody can testify to that at some point. Okay.
It would warm my heart to, to not do the English ivy. So.
Good. Uh, so sorry to have interrupted your testimony. Please.
Oh, that's great. Thank you for bringing it up. I'm, uh, this is, this is, this is fun. Thank you for asking for that to come out. Um, west of the building, there's hollies and understory trees will, uh, will be planted in the area disturbed by the construction access. And they are laid out informally similar to the trees that are there now. Uh, we can replace some of the lawn over there too. We've, we've had designs that, um, just didn't make the submission, um, of improving that area with, uh, more diverse ground layer too. And so we can consider, uh, not doing all lawn on the, on the west side of the tree and we can add in some, uh, native perennials and, uh, the deer resistant types. So we would be happy to do that too, if that's what the board would want and if, uh, the institute agree to that.
Right.
Um, overall 37 tree removals were already discussed and they require 55 replacements. And 25 are, 24 are planted, um, on this image here, right around the building site. And the rest are at the remainder of the site. So thank you for your time. I, I'd be happy to answer questions and, uh, change some species.
Go ahead, Jerry.
The number of buildings at the university have ivy growing up. Is that all English ivy?
The whole, the whole bed north of this is English ivy.
No, I, I meant that the.
The university, it, there's some Boston ivy. I think there's some English ivy, maybe Polvy knows. And I think they also have, um, Virginia creeper in a lot of places. So it's a, it's a mix. Polvy?
Um, yeah, just on that point, uh, there is a mix of different ivies, the Virginia creeper and also wisteria on some of the buildings and it's, um, but the university, um, controlling those, uh, species is big job. So, uh, in terms of the, uh, the, um, paved area outside the main entrance to the library, I may have missed this, but I wanted to clarify, currently there's these large concrete stretches. And are you planning to replace that with more pervious surface?
No, we didn't need to do, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
Pervious green service, surface.
Uh, so the gray squares, what, are they all the same surface?
So what's a little weird is when this was, um, processed and sent out, the image went weird. So the bluish area is bluestone and then those gray areas are a different type of stone.
Okay.
It could be a different pattern. So the whole area is a type of paver, but we wanted to highlight the movement and provide little interest for the plazas.
Okay, but they, it is somewhat pervious. Those stretches? No.
No, no, we didn't. The lawn is pervious.
Okay.
But not the paving. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Uh, one is we didn't need the impervious surface, but more importantly, the, given the adjacencies of the building, we have this plaza at about one to 2% slope, which is now 2% is the maximum you can be in handicapped for every direction, but some of these areas are 1% slope. So our top grading has to be perfect. The pavers have to be very level and it has to be level long-term. So we're doing the pavers on a little bit of sand, but then underneath it is concrete. So water that gets trapped there can go through the sand and we have holes in the concrete underneath. And then that trapped water can get down, but most of the runoff is sheet flow that goes west to east, like the existing pattern.
Okay. So just to, to make it a little bit more concrete, no pun intended, um, the, is it similar to what? I don't know if you've been by Firestone Library recently, um, but on the part of Firestone that's facing, um, Um, Washington Road at the intersection of William and Washington Road, there's a large plaza there that the university recently redid and paved. Large sections of that. Are you envisioning something along those lines?
I I I haven't been there, but this is, this will be bluestone or a paver that looks like bluestone, beautiful stone.
Yes, uh, that's what the university has there. It's a mix of bluestone and then some other.
Yeah.
Brick sized gray pavers.
Yeah, um, okay. So I don't think we're gonna do any brick size pavers. It'll be mostly uh larger sizes. And Francis Halsband, who will be talking in a little bit, um, is the consultant for the campus here at the institute. And has recommended bluestone for not only here, but for much of the campus. And she could talk about that. If if you'd like.
And I will just throw out as an idea, another thing to consider might be something like EcoTurf. Um, I was recently at the Dia Museum, um, which is up in um. On the Hudson Valley in New York. Near Beacon, New York, and they have done their entire parking area in um. This EcoTurf, and it looked amazing. Um, another, so that's just something to consider. Um. Another point.
Is that like a stabilized lawn that you're talking about?
It's, it's um, yeah, it it's the EcoTurf, which is these uh. Um. Type, same kind of material like cinder blocks, but it's thinner and then it's, it has openings to go through it.
Yeah, yeah.
I know what you mean.
I will, I will point out something that is unique on this. This will be a continuous look of pavers.
Mm hmm.
But about a quarter of it or 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 an eighth of it is overstructure. So it's architectural roof.
I see. Okay, so that's.
And that is, and and that affects.
Right.
Wanted to keep a uniform look.
Okay, okay. Um, and then with the Ivy, I mean, I I agree with. Allheartedly with um Louise's comments. Uh, if there's any, I think the institute um should think seriously about. Using native plants and alternatives. In that um areas where you're proposing to have Ivy.
That's, that's great. Yeah, we, we will then, the Ivy will re-sprout from the roots from this area. It'll be there. We're gonna drive some traffic over it. I can't remember if we're removing it to uh get the access. Uh, drive in there. We'll have to, I'll have to let our engineer explain that. Um, so yeah, it'll be a fight that I I would encourage the uni- the institute to take up to and.
Yeah.
Go with natives. Th- this was a, a plan that frankly said, you know what? It's gonna grow back anyway. So, thank you for your comments.
Okay. Um, any other questions for Mr. Nightstead, Mr. Weissman? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, will there be any review of the off-site planting tonight?
Oh, I.
The replacement trees, yeah.
Yeah, I would like to know more about that. I assumed somebody would be testifying to about them. Some of which I gather have already been planted. So I, are you the right person to talk about that? Mr. Nice dead, or is it somebody else?
Yeah, Michael.
Yeah, I could speak to that. Thank you.
Michael, you were already sworn in.
Yes, I was.
Yep.
So the, the institute, uh, the northern face of the institute has a uh. American plane tree, uh, LA, uh, that spans from the top of Ice Nine Drive to the front of Fold Hall. And it is really, um. It is, is icon of the institute and it's been here for seventy plus years. Um, a couple of years back, we had um Morris Arboretum here that did a. Extensive inventory and analysis of all the trees, the health of the trees on campus. Uh, provided us with an inventory of every single tree and its species. And we've tagged them all. Um, and in those reports, Robert Wells actually uh. Did a full report of all of landscaping and trees of the institute and uh was very specific. In that those trees um. Uh, had an effective life of of, eh, end of life at about seventy plus years, seventy to eighty years. And these were approaching the seventy year mark. Um, so in order to try to preserve that LA. And um. Um, that look to the front of the institute, we decided to um. Plant younger, uh, smaller trunk, uh, smaller caliber trees of the same species in between. The seventy year old ones that are there now, uh, for fear that. Um, if if they start dying off, we would still maintain that uh LA down front of the institute. So um, we, we did that thoughtfully and uh American plane tree um. From what we were advised, we're our, our native to Princeton. So.
Mm hmm.
We, we thought it was a good idea.
Yes, they are native and and um, uh. That's good to know about. I know the LA you're talking about and um. Uh, I certainly understand wanting to preserve it. It is, it is iconic. And so it's helpful to have that, that explanation. Have you planted all seventeen of those?
Yes.
More than already? Okay.
Yes, yes, we have.
And other um, other plantings that are not in the immediate vicinity of this project?
Um, we, we've also planted um, to date, about two hundred and sixty-five evergreen. Um, uh, are providing uh to form more of a privacy screen along Mercer. Uh, Mercer Road uh between the Battlefield and Maxwell Lane. Um. Which are, are doing very well. Uh, they are about five or six feet in height right now and we. We hope that uh in the next year or two, they'll start to fill in a little bit nicer, but um. Because of the recent, well, recent, in the past few years, the dashboard issue that we faced here. And have had to remove a lot of the dead trees on campus. Um, we've also committed to. Planting at least fifty trees per year for the next four years to try to make up for some of those trees that we had to get rid of. So. Um, we are well ahead of that goal. Um. We've been planting a lot of trees and I actually have uh. Somebody that's dedicated to watering the trees um two days a week right now. Um, so all they do all day long is. Water trees that have been planted in the last two years. So, and they're all doing well, happy to say.
That's great. That's great to hear. And um, I know that. Uh, I mean, anybody comes to these meetings knows I'm really partial to oaks. Um, so I know the red oaks are are very vulnerable these days to various um. Uh, bacterial leaf scorch and other things. Um, but I hope that you're planting some white oaks and willow oaks and other kinds of oaks. Because their, their value to um birds and pollinators is just absolutely enormous. And um. So, but I, it's great to hear about your overall. Tree planting uh ethic and your um. Your efforts to keep them healthy. It's been incredibly dry.
We've um, we've consulted with the, with the town arborist on many occasions. Um.
Great.
You get some input also on um. On the trees and the health of the trees and um, unfortunately, we are facing one, uh, there's one red oak that we have that. Um, has been uh determined to be diseased by this, this new uh. Disease that's out there for this red oak. So anyway, yes, we, we absolutely love trees here and we will continue to plant. As long as uh, long as we're here.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lesko?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And there was one other location that I don't think I heard mentioned, but I might have just missed it. And it's around that modular office building that was uh discussed earlier. Um. You know, uh, these were approved in twenty sixteen as essentially temporary trailers. Uh, they were approved by administrative waiver. Uh, and they were supposed to go away within eighteen months of the approval or during a construction that was occurring at the time. Uh. So, I think there's uh sixteen of the trees. Are proposed to essentially screen those buildings, uh, or that, you know, kind of T-shaped trailer. Um, it looks like they had already been planted. But the problem we have is, you know, that administrative approval is really up, uh, particularly now because we're hearing. That a lot of the workers in there will be able to move to this library. Um, so uh, you know, I'll ask Mr. Weissman to chime in. Uh, but I think, you know, a, a condition of this approval might be to. Rectify that situation to, to get rid of the temporary trailers, at which point we'll be left with trees that are screening. A T-shaped nothing. Um, so, uh, you know, I, I don't know if the institute has any thoughts on that. Um, I guess from a numbers perspective. They would meet the shade tree ordinance with those trees, you know, if they remove the, the building still. Uh, but from a kind of overall landscape perspective, you know, for years, uh, I don't know.
Not be the best value added, huh?
Exactly, exactly.
So, so I, I would like to just um comment on the um, the module office space. Um. So, there, there will be a point where um people will be relocated. Once we have the CO for the library. Um, and, you know, having that removed at that time, it is a reasonable condition. However. We would like the opportunity to either petition staff at that time. Or have a couple of extra years because we are anticipating some sustainability. And the energy efficiency projects, um, very similar where we're gonna need to have to relocate people. For uh, you know, for a shorter period of time, you know, so after.
In this case.
So after we, you know, focus on the library, uh, you know, for example, the West Building, which still has single panes. Uh, you know, we have that being looked into to try to make that more energy efficient. And while we're doing work there, we're gonna need some swing space. So rather than demolish the trailers. In, in a couple of years and then come back and try to get some sort of additional temporary um facility. We would like the ability to at least, um, you know, either talk to staff and present our timing. Or, you know, if this board is, is willing to give us a couple of extra years after that. Uh, so that we could finish some of those sustainability projects where we know we're gonna need some additional space.
Okay, is um, is a, a, two years enough?
That, uh, you, from the CO? I, I, Michael or or?
From the CEO, I'm thinking of from now, but um, anyway, I, I. I, I don't wanna leap ahead of what the, our professionals think. I really defer to Mr. Lesko and Mr. Weissman. To opine on their thoughts about this, but you're suggesting.
I, uh, if I could chime in, I mean, this, this has been there for eight years. Uh, it's become occupied. It was done as administrative waiver. Um, there was no site plan application with it. Which means that there's no stormwater management associated with this. At what point does a temporary structure become permanent? Um, I understand the ask to have this extended. I think putting a firm timeframe on it. Um. Is reasonable. I just, uh, to continue to put this into staff's hands, if, if it's been there for this long and. We're requesting another extension. I would just hate to get to a point that another extension is requested and then another is requested and. Before too long, eight years turns to fifteen and, and we're, we're back trying to figure out the situation again. Um, alternatively, I, I think if the applicant were to come in and, and apply for a site plan for these, these structures in the time being. And provide uh, uh, appropriate site plan requirements, including stormwater management. Um, I think either, either in a, a appropriate timeframe or, or a site plan approval for. The modular offices, I think either would be appropriate.
Uh, and any thoughts to add to that, Mr. Lesko?
No, no, I think that all seems fair. I mean, and then the question still is there of the landscaping. As it pertains to this application, uh, or the tree plantings, I should say, um. You know, if we know it's going away. Does it make sense to have those, those trees there? Uh.
Justin, they were already there, aren't they? Haven't they already been planted?
That's how, that's what it appears, looking at aerial imagery. So.
They, they were planted uh for the reason mentioned earlier where um. Uh, people didn't feel like they were uh. They were being given uh equal space because of their, you know, these were temporary office trailers versus. Um. You know, permanent offices in, in buildings. So we decided to uh. Do some plantings around them, but I, I assure you those plantings will not be wasted. Uh, you know, that they're. That they would be moved i- if anything. Um, those are all healthy. Uh, trees and shrubs which can be used in many other areas on this campus and. Um, as far as a timeframe. For the trailers, uh, and knowing our capital projects that are coming down the line. The West Building is a critical project for energy savings for us. Um. And my guess is, uh, it would be right in line after the library. So. If, if we had to guess or request a timeframe uh for those trailers to remain. I would say five years from now, which would probably be uh two years uh after the completion of the library, after receiving the CO. It would be two to three years, but we could come up with a date and uh kind of present that to you more formally.
Okay, thanks for being specific about that ask. We'll have to talk about that a little bit more later on. Unless people have, members of the board have thoughts about that right now. Okay. Um. Who is next? Mr. Degrazio?
Uh, good question. I believe we're down to our traffic. George Jakomar. George, you've been, been already sworn in.
I, I think there was also reference, and I don't mean to, um. Uh.
Long meeting.
Uh. Y- yeah, um, maybe we were gonna hear from Francis.
Maybe done by seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, David, can you put yourself on mute? I think we're hearing David Cohen's. Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Christopher, sorry.
Yeah, so in terms of our presentation, our next witness is George Jakomar for traffic.
Yep, yep.
And uh, we do have consultants here that would be able to bring in and answer questions that we don't necessarily have as part of our. Main uh presentation, but.
Okay.
You know, we're here to answer anything you like. Um, but uh, our next, our next slot is George. Um, and, and George, can you go over your, your, um, I think he's testified before this board many times, but. George, can you just briefly go over your qualifications?
Yes, good evening. Um, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Jersey and other states. Uh, my license is um current and I um have testified in front of this board for many years. Um, my education is that I have an engineering degree from Polytechnic Institute in Lausanne, Switzerland. And a master's degree in planning from Stanford University.
Thank you, Mr. Jakomar. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you. I think the main point in terms of parking and traffic for this uh application is that. There will not be any uh noticeable or, or any traffic and parking impacts because there is no. Increase in faculty and staff or, or members associated with this uh project as we heard before. Um, the next slide nineteen. Um, here we present the results of a more detailed parking study that was done in. Uh, two thousand sixteen, uh, that shows, you know, the parking demand peaking at about a hundred fifty nine, a hundred sixty spaces. On the academic campus. So that's the campus that's west of Alden Lane. And the point here, the reason I show this graph is in response to comment by or question by Mr. Anosike. Asking that we confirm that parking on the academic campus peaks around one o'clock and two o'clock. Uh, so that here, this graph shows that vague. Uh, so that here, this graph shows that very clearly. The next chart. Uh, slide number twenty, this is a slide that we included, uh, in our application in the letter that we submitted to the. Uh, municipality, uh, basically to show that today even that there's still significant parking reserves. You can see for the major parking lots that were surveyed and these surveys were done through. Uh, drone photography over, uh, several days in May of two thousand twenty-four. And you can see the occupancy ranges in the range of fifty-eight to sixty-four percent. Uh, so there is still significant parking vacancy on the campus. Another kind of, uh, side point, which is kind of interesting, is that the total parking demand in May two thousand twenty-four. Probably ranges, if you add the parking demand for those few spaces that were not surveyed with the drone photography. Probably in the range of a hundred thirty, a hundred thirty-one cars, which is less than what was, uh, determined in two thousand sixteen. Two thousand sixteen, the total parking demand was about a hundred sixty cars on campus. So basically that's my testimony. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you. Any questions? Related to. Traffic testimony? I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much, Mr. Jakmar. Any other, uh, witnesses, Mr. DeGrazia?
Yes, I'd like to bring back Janine Picaro, our chief operating officer, to talk a little bit about the bike. Bikes, you know, bike storage at, at the campus. Um, we are going to be requesting a variance. Um, so, uh, I would like Janine to kind of, um. Uh, talk a little bit about. You know, bike storage on campus and, um, what the current needs are.
Great. Thank you. So, similar to Georgia's study on parking, we tried to duplicate. You know, a similar timeframe for on-campus bicycle parking. Um, we went around and counted the number of bicycle parking spaces we have currently on our campus and which buildings they were next to, which is. Uh, reflected here on the slide. Um, we have presently more than a hundred and fifty bicycle parking spaces available next to or near just our academic buildings on campus. Um, the date and timestamps are probably a little small to, too small to read here, but this was actually from this Monday. Uh, between one and two P M, um, in George's, uh, study. Between one and two P M was the peak time for parking of cars on campus. It's also, you know, our busiest time on campus, you know, it's around lunch seminars, lectures, et cetera. And only twenty-four of our bicycle spaces of the hundred and fifty plus, uh, were used during that peak time of day this week. Um, we're a small academic campus. We've said this before earlier where it's easy to walk from the easternmost scholar's housing apartment. To the westernmost academic building in about ten minutes, if you're meandering. Um, probably a little quicker if you walk faster. So our campus is much more walkable, um, than say Princeton University's campus, which is much larger. And you see more bicycles there. Most of our scholars, uh, use, who use bicycles, use them to get to town. Or to the university's campus, but there just aren't as many who bike across with their bicycles, um, to our campus. Um. On that note, we have, you know, our, of our scholars, we have maybe a, a quarter of them every year that are international and. They don't have cars here on campus, so the bicycle is their means of transportation to further spaces or our shuttle van. Uh, but not necessarily to campus. Um, so to get a sense of the need for the library building presently. On this chart, the West Building and Simon's Dining Hall are the two buildings that are closest to the library. Um, and the parking outside of West Building is typically where many people who come to the library would put a bike if, if they were going to bring one. Uh, because it's the closest spaces. The picture up here in the upper right-hand corner, um, with no bikes parked there midday Monday. Um, is the one that was closest to the library. The next closest one is Simon's Dining Hall, which is right below the hundred and fifty number on the screen, the picture there. We had six, um, bicycles parked there. Um, at, uh, just after one on, uh, on Monday, which makes sense because the dining hall is open until about one thirty for lunch. And, you know, we did, you know, I, I talked a lot earlier about how eco-conscious our campuses, um, we do encourage bike riding. Um, and based on, you know, what we typically see here on campus, we have ample storage and parking for bikes. Um, we also have a mini repair shop where people can fix their bicycles, um, with tools we supply here as well. Um, so as Chris said, we will be respectfully requesting a variance for this project. From the forty-four spaces that are required by code based on the square footage of the building. Um, we will be proposing the addition of twelve more bicycle parking spots adjacent to the expanded, uh, library building. Um, but we feel that that will be, um, sufficient based on the typical. Usage that we see on campus on any given day. Um, thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Mr. Uh, a question about these lower two, uh, left, left photos.
Mm-hmm.
Those, I can't quite tell if there are bike racks there or not. It seems like the bicycles are. Change or, or to some, to each other or just.
So there's a, there's a clear railing here by the dining hall that, you know, has, uh, spaces with like plexiglass through them. But there are actual bike racks. It's the shadowing of the bicycles that are there and the shadowing of that railing that are kind of. Uh, just disguising the racks, very similar to all the other racks that you see here, the one up here. In this corner picture, it's the same sort of rack. It's just not that visible.
Okay, I, I will just comment that that type of rack doesn't meet the ordinance, uh, either. They're, yeah, um, they're not very good for walking bicycles too, and so. Uh.
Are you talking about the, the ones that at the top? In the picture on top? Yeah, totally agree.
Picaro is also saying. That there are similar racks, uh, in those two pictures that I was referring to.
I'm not surprised there are no bikes there.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, so a comment that I would have certainly would be, um. That if we were to grant this variance, I would like to have some kind of a plan. For converting the non-conforming bike racks to conforming bike racks over some period of time.
Um, thank you, David. Mr. Weissman?
Thank you. Sorry, some technical difficulties. Um. Just a comment and then a quick question. Uh, so the code, uh, permits an alternative option for institutes of higher learning for providing bicycle parking spaces. Um, they can either provide them in accordance with the schedule, which is how we arrived at the forty-four parking space variance. Or they may provide an annual report documenting campus-wide bike parking obligations, the total. Number of park, uh, spaces provided on the campus and a mitigation plan to address any shortfall. Um, the breakdown for the determination for that, um, required parking is different than the schedule. Uh, it's zero point four spaces, uh, per faculty, staff and student, and that's a campus-wide obligation. Um, and then there's a separate breakdown for requirements for dormitories, which is included in that, that campus-wide obligation. Um, so that being said, that is an option that the applicant has, and I just wanted to confirm with the applicant that they do not intend to use that and they do intend to. Request the variance.
Yes, so. This is a, a very, uh, different type of institution. Um, where they, they're not going to have a lot of change or, you know, growth in terms of, uh. Like you see at something like another institution, say like Princeton University. So rather than do that, um, annual report since. Um, you know, they, they wanted to kind of just look at this particular project in need. And request a variance to the extent that. They were deficient from the ordinance requirement. So. Let's just take a step back. We're looking at a survey done. This month where the weather is warm and you have a, a, a large amount of bikes out at this time of year and you're at sixteen percent utility. So there are a tremendous number of parking spaces. Even so, we're looking at adding some additional, you know, a dozen. With regard to this project that we'll be happy to locate, but. The reality is, unlike a typical project, even though we're expanding beyond the ordinance and hitting that threshold. We're not adding any new members or staff. Or, you know, any other users of the facility. So the, where, uh, you know, the expectation is the biking. Is still going to be at, you know, twenty percent utility or less. Um, and that's why we're asking for a variance because it is. You know, w- we're expected to not have a, a need for it. And if there is a need, the first thing they would do is go out and. Build some more parking, um, for their, their, you know, the, the members. Um, like we said. This is a campus where they're living very close in walking distance to the buildings. And you typically see the bikes going from residence into the downtown or into Princeton. Um, and that's where, you know, that's where the, the bike pattern typically follows, wh- while this is more of a walking pattern. Um, and that's why we're asking for relief from the ordinance because. It, it doesn't make sense to go, you know, we have eighty percent now availability. And to build just more, just, you know, really doesn't make sense.
Christopher, uh, given what you just said, why are you proposing twelve additional spaces? What's the thinking of, uh?
Well, we were just offering that because, uh, you know, because of. I mean, we, you know, originally we weren't proposing that. Uh, but if the board felt like we needed to put additional spaces, we would do that. Um, reduce the variance from forty-four to, um, you know, twelve less. Or if you're looking at the West Building as part of that, you know, eighteen counted towards the forty-four because it's in close proximity. I, I don't know. The reality is, we're here asking for a variance because it's not needed. And basically that we don't need the twelve either. We were just offering that. Because we were just, you know, to show that we're, we're proposing some, even though we don't believe there's a need.
Okay, thank you.
With all due respect, though, I don't think this study, if you could call it that, was done. By an engineer. Or on multiple days and multiple times. Uh, you know, I don't know what's being counted as a space. Is it? Each, uh, kind of slot in that rack? Uh, so, you know, I, I'm very. I don't doubt that the institute is, you know. Providing the parking that they feel they need, but at the same time, I highly doubt that. This is really any sort of admissible data, uh, to make any, to draw any conclusions. I mean, if we walked out on the campus right now, we could say, well, zero spaces are occupied. I mean, it's nine o'clock at night, uh, you know, so. I'm, I'm just wondering why, you know, we're here again, we had a similar case like this relatively recently. Where the bike parking ordinance is being treated as, uh, you know, a, a, a nice thing. Um, a thing we could ignore, but Mr. Jakmar just gave a full. Uh, testimony about car parking and we're not getting the same thing here. So I, I'm just, uh, you know.
Yeah, thank you for that, Justin, and, um. Uh, I, I apologize if the tone of my, some of my comments earlier sounded dismissive or rude. I, uh, about the type of rack that's in the picture up top. Um. It is, uh. Um. You know, not a rack that is, um. Particularly useful to people with the, you know, the kind of bikes that most people have nowadays and, um. And there's no, not more than, you know, three or four. Uh, spaces in that, what looks like ten, anyway, um. I, I. Um, personally don't have a huge problem with. Um, a variance if the. Um. Uh, if, if there's. A, a clear understanding based on the uses, you know, the, the usage people see every day of the bike facilities. Um, is that there's already more than enough. I do think that adding more makes. Sense and I agree, I think, um. That Mr. Cohen said, and if so, I agree that the non-complying. Um, existing bike. Um, rack facilities like we see in the top picture. Need to be replaced with compliant ones, um, in areas where bikes are most. Uh, most often parked. That's my opinion.
If I could interject, is that okay? I'm no longer test, okay, um, because I just is witness to a lot of the communications that we, as we've gone through this ourselves of what we should do. And the goal that the, the institute's always given us, do the right thing. And the thinking on the campus was, is if we provide a bunch of bike racks or covered bike parking spaces. That no one will use, it creates actually a negative environmental effect because you're going to embed a bunch of carbon and a bunch of stuff. That doesn't get used and they're trying to hit the right number and, and that's really what we want to do with you and I'm sure that's what you want us to do. Um, so if, if you give us a little guidance of how we could better, um, show you that. This is the demand we already meet or exceeded. I think we would be delighted to do that because I think we're all on the same page and I'm just offering that as. As a witness to all the communications on both sides at this point.
Mm-hmm.
Christopher, um, maybe somebody can testify with respect to this chart. Who prepared it, um, and what time of day it was?
Uh, it was done, it did, it's timestamped so that you know what time the, the day, it was in the middle of the afternoon, so it would capture the lunch hour. So this is usually, if you're going to get anybody biking, it would be, um, during that time where the meals are served. Um, because that's when you would have the largest amount of people during midday where the seminars are scheduled. Um, it, this was just a survey to show and, um. So that we have that buffer or that extra, um, amount. That's why we're proposing. To, to build twelve spaces that would definitely conform to the ordinance requirements. In and near, right next to the library so that it would, you know. Protect and be over, even though we think we don't need any. It would be a buffer of an additional twelve. And again, we're not talking about thousands of people here. Um, it has a very small membership and staff. Um, so it's, you, the numbers are not staggering and it's not open to the public. So we have a very good control on what we actually need. Um, and this was just a, a survey done on a sunny day where we expected to have a lot of, uh, people on bikes during midday.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cohen and then Miznuka and then Mr. Bodikheimer.
So, uh, a couple of comments, uh, in regard to several of the statements that were made. Uh, first of all. I think that there's a connection between racks that are not. Um. Easy to use or, or, uh. Or, or secure, which is that. Sometimes people will park their bikes elsewhere, like locked to a tree or a lock to a sign. Also, if the, the racks are not in the right places for, for the users, so. This, this touches on Justin's comment of, you know, whether it's a scientific study, I think. A real study of bike parking on, on the institute campus would have to document. Bicycles that are not parked at bike racks as well as bicycles that are parked at bike racks. Also, users will bring their bicycles inside if, i- i- if the bike racks are not secure and bring them into their office, but if it was a good. Uh. A good bike rack, they might very well have left it outside, so. That was one of the comments I wanted to make was that the fact that these racks, these particular racks are empty. Does not indicate to me that people are not riding their bicycles. Um. Second comment I want to make is make it is in response to, uh, what Mr. Grizia was just saying, which is that there aren't a lot of people on this campus. And if that's really the fact, then I don't know what. What you mean when you say there are not a lot of faculty and staff and students. I know there are no students actually. Um. You know, if it's. Five hundred people. Then. That alternative that's in our ordinance to say point four racks per. Per, per person. You know, could actually be advantageous to, um. To the institute in terms of the overall demand, right? So you might, you might. You, you, you might do the calculation and find out that a hundred fifty spaces is actually in line with our. With our ordinance, uh, using that alternative method, so I wouldn't reject that out of hand. I, yeah, I think the, and, and I'll just reiterate that I think it's important to, for the bike racks that you have to be usable, secure. Uh, which, which the current ones are not. So that would, would be a condition uh that I would. Reiterate that I would, would support.
Yeah, some of the current ones are not. Not all, right?
It looks like.
Um, I.
The easy.
Yeah, I'm not sure if any of them do.
Well, it looks like the easiest one to park that has the most space in the standard only has one bicycle, which is kind of ironic.
Mm-hmm.
One to the right in the center.
That's true, you know, but a lot has to do with how convenient the racks are at the places where they're wired.
And whether it's covered, yeah. Ms. Nuka and then Mr. Bodikheimer.
Um, yes, I think uh others have already kind of um made the same points, but. I agree with uh Mr. Lesko's uh statement earlier that it, it would have been nice to have seen a slightly more. Thorough version of this survey. Um. And with regard to the proposed twelve bicycle spaces by the library, I think. The placement of, of bike racks is very important. And so having. Spaces available next to buildings where people will be going is very important. So. For that reason, I would wanna see that um. That maintained, even if the variance is granted. And again, with the covered bike parking, that does make big, big difference. Having actually usable racks and covered racks. Um, I have two post-docs who bike. In and they bring their bikes into the office um every day cuz they don't wanna leave their nice bikes outside. In, in the weather. So, you know, that's something else to think about. Um, I understand that. Institute campus, it's a small community. Um, you don't have students. Um, but you still have a fair number of, of people cycling. And um, that might be something to think about as you're, you're planning um going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Nat? You're on mute.
Uh, I'm, I'm curious uh about the. An approximate cost estimate of the number of bike racks that it would, that are, that are being discussed here. Um, in total, as, and also as a share of the. Proposed renovation costs of the library. Anyone answer that? Doesn't have to be a precise answer.
I'm not sure who would have that information. Can, can you restate that? You just wanna know the relative cost.
Approximately, like, what, what are we talking about here in terms of a, a cost? For the number of bike racks that are being requested to comply with the ordinance? And what is that number as a share of the total library renovation cost? We're talking as a significant fraction? Are we talking like, is this a, is this an, you know, a, a significant share of the cost? Is it a de minimis? Like, what are we talking about? Are we, are we talking about something that's? Easy to do, small potatoes? Is it gonna break your bank? What, what are we talking about?
I, I, I think it's not a cost in terms of price more than a cost in terms of. You know, space and aesthetics. You know, we don't wanna have an, an area.
Let's not be too precious about that, please.
I mean, that's really.
My, 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 my wife just has spent her sabbatical at the institute and she, you know. Has biked there as she does at the campus. So, I mean, it's just not, you know, this is not a. You know. This is not the Holy Sepulcher.
No, 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 I know, but the, the issue is that we've, you know, like our parking, we've testified. That we're not changing the program. So the people that are biking there are gonna be the people that are biking there. The people that are driving there are gonna be the people that are driving there.
Mike, listen, my question, uh, listen, my question is, i- if you're going to comply, you have the latitude to, to, to design things. As you have with the library to conform with your, with your, uh, you know. With your design aesthetic at the institute. So I, I, this is, you know. I appreciate the cleverness of your response and your redirect of my question, but my question is really. Tell me about the money. Is this big or not?
I don't have, I, I guess I can look to somebody, uh, with someone, um, to see if they have the answer, but. I, in my mind, it was an, an offer of twelve spaces rather than forty-four. Because twelve spaces, you know, takes up much less room. Um, Michael, do we have any information on cost? I, I don't, I don't know if we.
We, we don't, we don't have specific, specific information on cost of bike racks, but I can tell you that it's not significant. It, it's. It, it really isn't about the money at this point. We. We, we, we were just trying to make a case that the spaces that we do have available are not being used. And didn't know more, that's all.
So, at the risk of. Uh, I mean, this is, you know, deflecting from, like, it sounds like, you know, we're really like this right now on this discussion. This is not, this is. Obviously a, a difficult one. So I'm gonna run the risk of suggesting. Is there a bike-related infrastructure investment that you would be? You would think would be more valuable for the institute that would improve the biking environment for both the community and. Uh, read the, you know, your, your, your scholars on, at the institute who bike to town. Um, and so that's one question. There's the first question is, is there something? That would be beneficial to the community and to the institute that you would rather spend? An equivalent amount of money on that you would have been spent, had to spend on the racks if you were gonna comply with code. And is that something that is within the latitude of the planning board? I'm now asking planning board staff and attorney, is that within the latitude of? The planning board to request or condition as part of a variance?
Uh, I could tackle that one first and Jerry, feel free to jump in. I, I think any. Uh, you know, sort of condition to alleviate the variance would be more based on number and purpose. Than money necessarily. Um, so if the board, you know, says. As long as there's, let's just throw out a number, twenty-five short-term outdoor spaces. And five, you know, long-term indoor spaces. Um, you know, I, I would feel much more comfortable with that. And again, those are just made up numbers, um, than I would with, you know, X dollars need to be spent. Um, actually, this Monday at council, uh, we're moving forward with Heinz plot or Nassau Street. Uh, discussion and bike racks are on the list. And it's really, it, it goes from the Spartan. You know, comb ones or wave ones all the way up to ones that, you know, look like modern art at this point. Uh, so, you know, I, I think if, if money is not necessarily the concern. If aesthetics and location are, are more of the institute's con- concern. Um, you know, I think aesthetics could certainly be figured out uh with some Scandinavian-designed bike rack. Uh, and location, you know, there's a decent amount of area uh around this large library.
Um, can I? I'm just, then I just, I'll just say, I, I, just going back cuz it is the testimony of the, of the institute. That the bike racks are not numbered as a numeric, as a matter of numerical demand. And it's also the testimony that if scholars are gonna be using bicycles, they're gonna be using it to get to town. And I'm not persuaded that the, that, that the bike infrastructure between the institute and town. Uh, has no needs that could be improved. So there must be, there must be something. And I'm not trying to deflect from what you said, Justin. Thank you for, for that, but I just wanted to make that point again. Um, you know, what's a way out of this?
So, can I say something else? So we received the comment. We received the comments. On, you know, ten days ago or so, or, you know, a week or so ago. Um, you know, we tried to do a, you know, quick survey to be responsive to the question that was asked of us. Um, we didn't have time to do a proper bicycle study from the eighteenth to today. And so we were, you know, trying to give an indication of, of what we know. You know, as, you know, individuals who have worked on this campus for a while and what we typically see, um, to be responsive to this question. Um, it, this is really not a matter of money. I mean, we, we'd always try to comply with the town. Um, you know, we offered to put in twelve more spaces because, you know, we did think about the alternate. Um, calculation in the annual report that Dan had suggested in terms of. You know, point four, based on the number of faculty, staff and students that you have if you're an academic institution. We would basically meet that requirement based on the number of spaces that we currently have today. So I think maybe what we could do is take a look at the current bike racks that we have. You know, we're in the process of doing. Like a mini-campus plan and thinking about all of our walkways and egress and accessibility, et cetera. And so why don't we agree to take a look at the racks that we have, upgrade the ones that we need to? And, you know, take a little bit of a, a further look at this in terms of a longer study or. Um, think about, you know, filing this annual report to the town to, to suggest that we re- meet the requirements as it is today. Um, or something along those lines. And, you know, I'm sure that there's a place that we could, you know. Be in, in compliance with the requirements of the code. You know, we were just trying to be responsive this evening to the question that was posed to us.
But Mr. Bodikheimer, as I understand it now, when he's talking about bike infrastructure. He's talking about off-site infrastructure to, to accommodate the scholars and staff that are taking bikes to town. Is that fair to say in that?
Is it though?
Again, and that was, and that, it is, that was a question. I mean, I, it was, is, is, you know. I, I was wondering if there's a way to get out of the, the, where the conversation felt to me to be, to be, which is. As a matter of principle. We on the planning board and the, on the town council are uncomfortable with. What feels like an evasion of any discounting of the importance of the bike parking requirement. And on the institute's side, they're saying, look, it's not, it doesn't seem necessary. And that's an argument that's pretty hard to resolve. You know, and insisting on something that's not necessary for the point, for, for the purpose of a principle. It's, that's, this is, this is the discussion that's gonna go around and around in circles and be very con- conflictual. And so that's why I'm asking the questions that I'm asking to see if there's some other way that this might be. Resolved within our authority and to the satisfaction of the institute and us, the planning board and the municipality. So I'm, I'm really just trying to, I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to do.
Trying to get, yeah.
Right, Jerry.
Stop, stop going around in circles. And I, and I, I mean, I take the institute uh, at its word that they just were trying to respond to. To uh comments and um in memos and also, you know, get a sense, document. Uh, the conditions, uh, give us a snapshot um on a beautiful fall day when biking, you know, you'd expect a lot of people to ride bikes. If they um were inclined to do so, but um. Uh, I do think that if, um, I'm still not clear on whether. If uh the twelve um. Spaces or the twelve slots that were um. That are proposed to be added. Plus, um, replacing the um existing uh bike parking. That is not compliant. Does that get to the one hundred and fifty number that? You know, that is considered uh, um, appropriate under our ordinance based on the point four. Uh, figure per people on campus. I'm sorry, I'm just. I hope, I, I hope my meaning is clear. Does that, does that get us to that number? Or, or is forty-four additional parking, uh, bike parking slots? In our view, needed to get us to the hundred and fifty number? Do you see what I'm asking?
I, I, I think we can't answer it tonight, Louise.
Okay.
It depends, it depends.
Well, we have to, I mean, to, to Nat's point, we have to come to some conclusion tonight. I don't wanna just.
Agree.
Completely.
I agree. I agree.
I mean, we could, we could. I'm sorry, we could agree to do a report every year. You know, we were just trying, you know, we're a very small staff. So what we were trying to do is to avoid adding another annual report that we needed. Totally, totally get that. Yep. Yeah. But we could absolutely do that every year if we needed to.
Okay, maybe Justin can comment on. What type of report would be acceptable? I think the first report. You know, would have to show where all your bike parking spaces are currently and what your count is. And then, as you indicated, because things don't change very much from year to year at the institute. Follow-up reports could be very low effort. But, Justin, I don't, do, do you wanna comment on that?
Uh, well, so for comparison's sake, we get a report from Princeton University every year about all their transportation. Um, and it's about thirty pages, you know, so that's, I don't know, tenfold bigger than, than uh the institute. And that includes car parking, that includes everything else. So, you know, it, it's. We wouldn't be talking a, you know. Even thirty-page report annually, but I, I do understand the concern about, you know, just not wanting to add another thing. Um, that report, though, as stated in Dan's memo, uh, does include, uh, you know, documents, campus-wide bike parking obligation. Um, and the total number of spaces provided on campus and a mitigation plan to, to address any shortfall. Now, if it was the board's, uh, you know, if the board maybe said, well. We don't wanna make it an annual requirement, but to, to allow for this variance, we'll do that one time and. You know, kind of clean things up at once. I mean, maybe that could be a way forward if Jerry and Christopher. Agreed that that made sense. Um, you know, I, I don't know if from the institute's side, they would necessarily want that. Cuz that means, you know, documenting and replacing everything. Um, so it really is just a matter of. Are we looking at this as one site that needs forty-four uh spaces under our ordinance? Or are we looking at this as a campus-wide that gets the annual plan or at least the one-time annual plan? And I think that's where, um, you know, there is some. Leeway for the board and the institute to decide which way to go. Um, but, you know, the, just the other. Part of this is the forty-four space requirement, uh. You know, what we would hear for that to provide a variance would normally be what we hear for car parking. You know, here's, and, and I, I just think it's more, more detailed than what we heard tonight. Um, and how exactly, you know, just think about some of these, these ones we hear for car parking. It's, we have X number of employees and. You know, twenty of them uh live here, so they're not gonna drive. And then. Five more, you know, we'll put five spaces for, for the five that are gonna drive. Um, we haven't really heard that type of analysis tonight, so I hope. Didn't open up more questions than it, uh, you know, solved. Um, but that's, you know, I think where we're at with this.
Yeah, and if I could just add one quick thing, um, there's been a lot of talk about how it's a small population of scholars and staff. But maybe somebody could tell us what it is. It must vary from year to year a little bit, but probably not a lot, but we haven't heard what the number is.
So we invite typically approximately a hundred and ninety. We, we welcome about a hundred and ninety to two hundred members per year. Um, and we have approximately a hundred and sixty full-time equivalent faculty and staff on this campus. So, you know, four hundred is a good estimate. You know, there's not four hundred people on this campus every week of every month. Obviously, like summers are much less. Our terms are not as long as a university. We have thirteen-week terms instead of a fifteen-week. Um, you know, academic terms. Um, so, you know, our numbers are our highest from September to December. And then from the end of January to the beginning of April is the end of our academic terms. So, you know, there's not. The, the, the numbers on this campus, I would say, if we were gonna use a number to estimate, it would be approximately four hundred. And at the point four, that's about a hundred and sixty bike parking spaces. So we're very close to where we are. So we're very close to where we are, which is why I was trying to represent a snapshot tonight for the committee. Because, you know, the reporting. You know, we could do the reporting, but we're, we're right about there in the ballpark. So. You know, if we think about updating some of our bike racks, we look at the, the code, you know, I think, I think we can get there as a compromise here for. You know, and I think we're in compliance. We may not have the best racks. You know, and they may not all be consistent, but I think. The number of spaces that we have currently on this campus. Are probably at the level that they need to be based on that calculation. Um, it's just a matter of which way we look at it.
And ju- just quickly in terms of the number, you, you said you, you get about a hundred and ninety uh, invitees every year. And in addition to that, you have a more, I guess it's more permanent scholarly sk- uh, scholars of about a hundred and sixty?
That's faculty, and so that faculty and staff. So those are our employees that we pay. We have about a hundred and sixty, and we have, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred. Um, members, as we call them, scholars who are invited to come and spend time at the institute, whether it be. For one, you know, term or for an entire year. Some of them are multi-year. But on average, that's kind of where we, we are.
Okay. Great, thank you. So when you said four hundred, um.
That's all in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh huh, okay. Uh, Mr. Cohen, um, and then, uh, Ms. Perlmutter?
Right. Mr. Cohen, then, then not Justin, let's go.
Not, then not, no.
Sorry about that, I got cut off.
That's okay.
So, um. Yeah, I, so I want to offer an opinion, which is I do think. That the community and the institute will be better served. By taking a campus-wide approach. Uh, rather than going for forty-four parking spaces at the library. So I think I'm agreeing with uh. Ms. Procaro. I think that what I would recommend is to, you know, get somebody. On this team for this project to do the first study. For you of the, where are the bike racks on campus right now? Do a map with them. Indicate which ones meet code in terms of the design of the racks. And uh, you, you know, you already know what your campus population is, so. Um, and, and that same consultant should propose. How? The bike racks will be upgraded, whether we'll be able to fit the same number. In the current locations, which doesn't seem to be the case because they're very dense, those racks that were shown in the pictures. So you may lose a few spots when you're converting to compliant racks. And then you should know where you're going to be adding racks to make up for the ones you're losing. I think that that's the, that's the report. And uh, if it's not a burden on staff because you're hiring someone to do it for you. That future reports should be very simple to do, just in terms of saying. Same information as last time, except we've upgraded. Five of the racks this year, we've upgraded ten other racks next year, so we're getting closer and closer to, to the goal. So, um. That would, that would be my preference, my recommendation, is that that's the way we should approach this. And um, I appreciate the institute's willingness to, to uh. Sort of go in that direction, which I, which I think I heard.
You did.
So David, just so I understand, we would do essentially a survey. Include the, the new twelve that we're proposing. And then, um. But, and then periodically, we don't have to do it all at once, but over time, we can update and report on. Making them in compliance. So for example, we may have twelve spaces somewhere else. And then the next year, we may have ten there or fifteen there that are compliant, depending on need. And we can, we can do that report and provide it to the municipality.
Right, I, I just, I'm hesitating to call it a survey. Chris, because I'm not asking for what Justin was talking about before in support of the variance. He wanted a survey to really understand the demand. And how many bikes there are, not just how many bike parking spaces there are. One of the appeals of going with this campus-wide approach. Is you're going, you're, you're aiming for point four parking spaces per member of the community. You don't have to worry about how many of those spaces are filled. Um, you know, so. Uh, that's a lot easier study to do. It's really, it's sort of a planning study. Rather than a traffic study, if you will. It's a planning study that identifies where you have spaces. Whether they're compliant, where you put, you know, how many you can accommodate in those locations if you make them compliant. And if you can't accommodate the same number. Where you're gonna uh, add additional ones as you transition the campus to be compliant.
Uh, makes sense to me, David.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you so much for laying that out so clearly. I mean, and, and what I. What I take from that is that. You know, the campus-wide approach starts with. A study or report on existing conditions, locating the racks, identifying which ones comply, which ones don't. How you're going to replace the ones that don't comply with ones that do and where those go. Um, and um, that sounds exactly right.
No, I, I think it's very, very reasonable too, so thank you. We'll, we'll surely do that.
Yeah.
But that study would.
And that puts you in compliance. Um, it puts you in a position to comply with exactly what we require. And do it in a way that's systematic and helps you to upgrade. And update what you already have.
Yeah, I was actually going to. And add something along the same lines, which is that this could be handled administratively, and I, I, I am uncomfortable just saying, well, we think we know what the numbers are. But at least get what, the type of report that you need, whether you do it area, you know, campus-wide or. Just here, you know, that's a, that I would leave up to Justin, I can't tell that. But at least enough in the record so that we can feel that we've got what we need. But at the same time, not hold this up and let it be done as, on an administrative level and let them work out what it is they really need and how, and uh. The annual reports, et cetera, which, which you probably would want.
But I. Yeah, but the, the condition can lay out what's expected in order to get to what's required. By the, by the ordinance to comply with this, you know, with.
Yeah, and, and it can be done in a way so that, you know, that doesn't have to be laid out right this instant. Tonight. But it can be done so that Jerry can draft whatever he needs, and it would be put then in terms of the, uh, you know, if they would work with the. Ja- with Justin to work out whatever it is they need over time, but um. I, I think they, there is some need for, I mean, I think they do have to meet the requirements. Instead of show that they meet the requirements.
Right. But with a campus-wide approach, rather than the forty-four in the immediate vicinity of this building, yeah.
And i- if the numbers that they get wasn't at one short or at all accurate, and you added the ten to that. And you multiply four hundred times point four. Bingo, you're right at the number, and that four hundred is a little more than the actual numbers they, they gave us.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so we are, um, it's nine forty-one. By now, we almost always would have taken a ten-minute break. Um, I forged ahead thinking we might be done by now, but clearly we're not, and we ha- have members of the public. There are eight people. From the public who um, are here. So I'm not saying we won't take a break. I do think it makes sense to, but I want to know, um, if any members of the public intend to. To address the board tonight, would you please virtually raise your hand right now? Okay, so there's at least one, Andrew Sutton. Um. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Okay, we have just one, one member of the public. What I would like to do is um, open. Uh, uh, unless there are other questions from board members for um, the expert witnesses. Uh, and I'm not seeing any hands go up. I'd like to hear from the member of the public that wishes to speak. Um, and, and then uh, consider taking. A fairly short break before we reconvene and button this up. Does that?
Lu- Louise, do you want to hear from, any testimony from our experts first?
Um, yes, yes, I guess that uh, is the right thing to do. I'm sorry. Uh. Uh, thanks, Jerry. So, um, Dan Weissman or Dan Dobromilsky or. Victor Anosike, do you have anything to add to what you've already? Said that you think the board needs to consider before we hear from the public?
Uh, if you'd like, if you'd like, Madam Cherry, you just run through quickly a couple of the staff comments if the applicant just wanted to address them. Um, but we'd request that the applicant obtain a current NJDEP Freshwater Wetlands Letter of Interpretation for the Institute Pond.
Agreed.
Okay, Dan, just hold on a second. Let, let, let me just grab your report. Okay, so what page are you starting on?
It would be page two.
Oh, page, page, what's unnumbered, but it would be four point oh, uh, A one, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Really helpful to number the pages going forward. Go ahead.
Uh, they, they are now. Uh, yes. The, the format I was using previously, uh, yeah, no, it, it made the modification already. Um. And section. Four point O G, uh, request that the uh, applicant utilize the same construction route of Maxwell Lane. As was on pre.
Okay.
Uh, bicycle parking, we talked about parking was discussed. Um. And that's it. And then the only other thing was the, the standard comments.
Yep, your comment, one, we, we agreed to the detectable warning surfaces.
Mm-hmm.
Talked about the parking, yep.
And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Um. Uh, Victor Ano Sike, do you have anything to add?
Oh, a- actually, I have one other comment, and we did ask for that additional time with the module office space. Um, I think Michael had testified.
Oh, yeah, I'm.
For five, you know, that was the only other issue there.
I, I, I don't want to deal with that right this minute. I'd rather hear from the public first, but. Uh, yeah. Victor, anything?
Oh, nothing. Uh, I think my comments haven't addressed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dan Dobromilsky?
No, I have nothing to add. I think the applicant's presentation and the questions from the board uh, really. Resolved all the landscape issues that could be there.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, did I miss anybody?
Justin hasn't said.
Justin, Justin.
Uh, just one last thing. Um, it seems like there's going to be a big flat roof on top of this building or, or maybe multiple roofs. Um, obviously, uh, the institute uses geothermal energy, so solar might not be that important. You know, to them. Um, but echoing a comment in the P E C memo, has there been any thought to a solar array? Or even a green roof, or, you know, even white paint to reflect uh, the sun?
It, it was looked into, but it was determined based on, you know, structural evaluation. Um, that it wouldn't be appropriate here. So, so for example, we were focused on um, preserving the historic. Uh, or the, I should say, the building below. Um, and the structure built sort of around it, when you take in the uh, you know, the wind weight. Uh, and, and I guess our architect could talk to it. It just, from a structural standpoint, wasn't, wasn't a good idea.
That's good enough for me, I think, because of the geothermal system at the campus.
Yeah, and the roof will also be white.
Great.
Oh, good, that's great to know. Thank you. Okay, any other questions from board members? All right, um, thanks, Jerry, for keeping me between the ditches. Um. Uh, Carrie, will you bring over Andrew Sutton?
Okay, he should be joining us.
Okay. Um. Mr. Sutton, if you could activate your cam, um, activate your camera too. I see you unmuted yourself. That's great.
I, I, I don't have a camera, but I have a face made for radio.
I've heard that before.
So, so, so first of all, I want to.
Uh, we need, we need to swear you in first, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
So I, I, I'm raising my right hand.
You swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, and so Swans, please say your full name for the record and spell your last name.
Andrew T. Sutton.
Spell your last name?
S U T P H I N.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
So my expert testimony is based on that I've been. Uh, a wonderful user of the I A S for sixty-two years tomorrow. Nobody has to wish me happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
A- a- and I love the institute. I learned how to use a compass there. I took numerous classes. I learned how to fish. I learned how to fall out of a tree there. Et cetera, and have taken a incredible amount of classes there and uh, lectures. And I think that this is a wonderful opportunity to fix this building, which I've watched from nineteen sixty-seven leak. Hmm, I think it's just terrific. Uh, my first concern, which you all addressed, was uh. I have been asked by my neighborhood, I live in the uh, uh, institute neighborhood, which is basically uh. Populated by uh, resident scholars, so full-time scholars, which I think uh. The institute left out. They have full, you know, people that are tenured scholars that live there. And in fact, I have one of their telephone numbers, which is always very interesting to get calls from uh. Around the world in the middle of the night when uh, atomic things happen. And uh. And also, uh, uh. My neighbor, I probably bring our neighborhood down in uh, IQ. Because uh, everybody is either a Nobel Prize winner or a Maxwell Prize winner or an Abel Prize winner. Et cetera. But uh, I have no skin in the game, so I can actually say what my neighbors are concerned about. And uh, essentially, it's really uh, something that Mr. Jackart, uh, Jackament uh. Uh, discussed, and that is that over the past twelve years. We've seen, and yes, nothing happens quickly on uh, the campus of the institute. Uh, but there's a slow expansion that happens. So we've seen Wolfson Hall being built. We've seen Blue, uh, Bloomberg Hall being built. We've seen, and I may have the uh, chronology of this wrong. Uh, we've seen uh, the Simon Dining Hall being expanded with the twenty-five-hundred-square-foot wine cellar. Which is lovely. Got to say, that's the size of my house.
Uh, Mr. Sutton, you're, you're sort of running out of time, so.
I'm, I'm trying to speak as quickly as I can.
Okay, good, thanks.
So all, all, all of this infrastructure at the institute has been. Uh, expanded over the uh, past uh, twelve years. But the infrastructure feeding the institute, which was testified by Mr. Chandler. Uh, and also uh, Counselor uh, De Grazia, and also Mr. Secconi. Who sees uh, expansion coming for the West Building. Is it appropriate for the campus? Of the Institute for Advanced Study to have its two main entrances on a residential road, Olden Lane? I, I, I was born here in Princeton, and Princeton University had its main entrance on Nassau Street.
Uh, Mr. Sutton, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I, I really am. Um, I, I think we get your point. The concern that I have um, is that this um. What you're discussing is, is not what's before uh, the board tonight. Um, and um. Uh. Uh, uh, unless you have a, a, a very, very quick comment that is specific to. Um, the project that we're. Um, that we're considering and the requirements directly associated with that. Um. You know, the, the, the driveway access is, uh, you know, from Olden is, is just not relevant to this application, I'm sorry to say.
That is true. Thank you.
Um, thank you, and thanks for your patience. Um, I know it's been sort of a long night. Are there any other, going back to look at the attendees, are there any other members of the public who, who wish to speak to the board tonight about this specific application? And its requirements? I'm not seeing any, so I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. And, um, it's five minutes to ten, or seven minutes to ten. I, I think just for the sake of bio breaks, et cetera, um, I would like to, to break for, uh, until ten o'clock sharp. If that's all right with people. And, um, reconvene and, um, button this down. So, okay?
Sounds good.
See you at, see you at ten o'clock. Uh, so start. Thank you, Carrie. I'd like to start by tackling the, um, modular offices issue. Uh, in, in twenty sixteen, the expectation was that that would be in place for eight months. Um, if we, uh, were to agree to the suggestion that we give them five more years, that would be going from eighteen months to thirteen years, which is completely not okay. Um, in my opinion, uh, so, uh, I really, I really feel like the applicant needs to, well, Justin, you have your hand up. I, I will let you speak your piece, and then we'll talk about what needs to happen here.
Yep, I've been sorry to cut in. Um, I think as we started to discuss before, uh, if, and again, I'll defer to Jerry and Christopher of how to make this, uh, agreed upon condition, but if there was a condition that the applicant remove the trailers, uh, or get site plan approval prior to the certificate of occupancy, uh, that would, you know, not put a date on it, because we tried putting a date on it, um, but it would put, you know, a requirement on it, uh, and one that I think, you know, we're not trying to be harsh when there clearly is going to be a need for this, uh, but just to, to, you know, bring everything above board.
Yeah, that, that's exactly where I was going, um, Justin, so, um, thank you for that. We're just, um, connecting it, you know, either a removal or a site plan with the CO. I think is a really good, um, way to go. I, do other board members have opinions or that differ with that, or?
Uh, and if I could just add one more thing before that, I think we as staff, you know, I talked with Dan about this earlier. We'd be fine with working with the applicant, you know, if they, uh, uh, received a temporary CO while this was happening, because obviously, they knew, need to move people from one building to another. You know, we can't wait to CO one, and then, you know, it just wouldn't logistically work. So I, I think we'd be happy to work with them, uh, on a TCO first as well.
Justin, I'm not sure what, what we would be doing then, okay? I understand that if we had a condition that said we've got to remove the trailers or get a site plan approval prior to TCO. Now, you added something to that, but I'm not sure how that would work.
Uh, prior to the full CO, they would need one of those two things. But obviously, they can't take the trailers down and leave people without a place to work. So that's why we would work with them with the TCO.
So.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure.
Is, so.
Not sure what you're suggesting.
You know, what we're trying to avoid is trying, i- i- is going through it, essentially demoing these, these buildings, because that doesn't make any sense for, from, for us from a sustainability standpoint. Is, is it, are you, are you uncomfortable with giving us, uh, two years from CO? Because that would allow us to move people in, shift people out, finish those other projects. And then we would be, we would be done, and then we could remove it after that two years, uh, from that two-year point.
Well, what concerns me, Mr. Degrassia, is that the, these, there was an eighteen-month timeframe put on these in twenty sixteen. I mean, that's what, it's the precedent, uh, that concerns me, that, that they are, they are, have, are no longer temporary. And, you know, and so I don't want to, um, well, I.
I wasn't around to do it, so all I know is that it's there, and I'm just looking at, like, from today, what are our choices? We know we need some swing space. We're gonna have to end up demoing it. Um, and then, you know, I'm not sure what we'll do, if we'll, we'll have to come in for another application, like you, like you're saying, or come in for.
Create a site plan for it. I mean, that, it, is that like such a heavy lift, uh, that, that you would demo it rather than present a site plan that just, that allows for stormwater management and the like? I mean, what am I missing?
And Justin, are we sure there was no stormwater management done at that time? I, I mean, I wasn't involved, um, and my engineer, I, I don't think was either. Um, I don't.
Yeah, I defer to Mr. Weisman on that, but I, I really doubt there would be if we were only expecting this to be up for eighteen months and then gone. You know, it's modular. It's made to, to be picked up and moved.
Yeah. My recollection going through the file was that there was no stormwater management, uh, installed as part of it.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to kind of cut through the confusion and suggest that I think what's, we're really talking about here is asking the institute to do a site plan. We're not asking you to take the buildings down, because it's clear you have a need for them. Nobody thinks that's a good idea to, you know, take them down and then put something back up or whatever. So that's, I, I just want to be clear. I think that's really the ask. Is that a site plan be done to allow these to remain, that it's just
Okay.
Uh, repairing a, uh, something that wasn't handled properly, uh, when it was done originally, and, and trying to make sure that it is. And, and by the way, Chris, I mean, not to, um, I mean, the university put up a temporary structure as a dining hall that I remember hearing a year or so ago in connection with one of their, one of their projects that's going on right now. So it's, uh, you know, we're, we're requiring other applicants to do a site plan for a temporary structure that's going to last a certain amount of time to make sure that the impacts are taken into consideration, and, and I think that's what we're asking for here.
David, uh, let me just pin down the, the timing. Did they have to get the site plan before the TCO? Or do they have to apply for it before the TCO? And I guess that's what Justin.
Right. What Justin was saying was that they have to do it before their permanent CO.
Correct.
But all, the only reason that that matters, Jerry, is if they're going to take down the temporary structures. That difference between a temporary CEO or a permanent CEO, if they're going to take down the structures, staff is saying they're willing to work with them to help them get the occupants of these temporary structures into the new building before this condition would take effect. But if they're gonna keep, keep the temporary structures, which I think makes sense for them, and it makes sense for us.
Yes, because they were going to use them for other
Right, the, but, yeah. Exactly. So the timing doesn't matter all that much. I mean, my hope would be that the institute would start working on that site plan s- soon, you know, before, before they're ready for a CO on this, on this, uh, library expansion.
Okay.
But that would be the drop, that would be the drop dead, is that it would have to be.
And we're talking, we're talking about a minor site plan, correct? The difference is that a major requires a traffic study and stuff like that, but.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for staff.
Well, I mean, ultimately, it's up to the board to decide that, um, you know, it's, I guess the condition would say site plan approval, and I mean the board later, uh, through the site plan committee. So I would just say site plan approval, and I would imagine it would be minor, but, uh, it's not for me to decide.
Okay. So if the trailers, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little dense about this. If they're going to keep the trailers, they have to get site plan approval, and would that be before the permanent CEO?
They have to submit a site plan. I don't think they have to get, well, I'm sorry, Justin, why don't you?
Yeah, I would say they have to get approval, uh, or take them down.
Yeah, we. Before, before a permanent CO.
For this.
But not before, but not before a TCO, a temporary CO?
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
And I mean, ultimately, how I imagine it might play out if the institute does decide to come in for a site plan is they would come in and they would say, we are going to use them while, you know, future project X is, you know, under construction for a year and a half, two years, whatever it might be, uh, five years, uh, you know, and then the board would consider that at that time.
Yeah, I, I will just again, comment, it's more likely to be deemed a minor site plan if there's, if there're temporary structures and there's a timeframe on it.
And I don't think the intention here is to be onerous. You know, it's, it's just to straighten this twenty sixteen approval out.
Yeah, I, I, I'm glad you said that. I agree. I, I hope this doesn't feel like gotcha, but it, it is important to address it. Um, other, uh, other comments before Jerry maybe goes through um, conditions?
Um, Madam Chair, I just wanted to ask about the, the bike report that we talked about earlier. So my understanding of that conversation, uh, was the twelve spaces would still be required at the library. And the applicant would have to do an annual report, um, with those, uh, as David so eloquently described it earlier. But what I was unsure of is, are we talking an annual report in perpetuity, as the ordinance says? Or are we talking an annual report until that compliance is gained?
I did not think we were talking about an annual.
Yeah, I, I don't think that was in David's.
Um, I, I thought we were talking. I'm sorry, David, go ahead.
It was because it's in the ordinance. We're, we're, we're trying, but, but my point was that it could be something that would be very, very simple from year to year for, for the institute, because they don't, you know, their population doesn't change from year to year. So certainly, it would be annual, and, you know, uh, explaining progress on the transition to compliant bike racks. And then after that, it could be as simple as, uh, no change from last year, we're still in compliance, you know?
So it would, as you said, originally locate the racks, identify those that don't meet the code, propose or demonstrate how those would be upgraded to meet code and add the, the twelve required to meet the hundred and fifty campus-wide uh, bike parking requirement number.
Right, but there may also be some other new locations required.
Hmm.
Because as they transition to compliant racks, the ones that are there currently, you know, we had that discussion, you have a little four-foot rack that has twelve slots in it.
Yeah.
It's not a twelve, it's not twelve parking spaces, right? So, once they're changing to a different kind of rack, they may not be able to fit them all in the current locations, so there may be other locations as well.
Right, you would said how compliance would be done. I think that pretty much covers that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Ms. Wilson Anderson, Claudia?
Just a, a very simple clarification on compliance. Uh, does it make sense to have a timeframe so that this won't go on in perpetuity in terms of reaching compliance? And what I'm talking about for compliance is basically compliant bike racks that over some period of time, uh, five years, uh, they will all be compliant.
I personally think it's a very good point, and if, and at one point, we talked about this as a condition on the variance that they were seeking with respect to the bike racks. And if we do that, I think we have some flexibility. And to have them go on and do it year after year, although I know what the ordinance says, but now we're talking about a condition with respect to a variance. And then really not saying anything is, except no change. It doesn't seem to me to make a couple of sense.
But the problem with that, Jerry, is we're gonna have future projects.
Yeah.
And every time they have another building that they do in addition to.
Yeah, yeah.
Trigger another, yeah.
But if, if there are future projects, wouldn't they have to come back to the planning board and we'd have to review the?
Not if they, not if they're not adding to their campus population.
But.
This is a, this is a different way of complying with our ordinance.
So are you saying that it would not require a variance because they would comply in a different manner?
Correct.
Yeah, so the variance goes away.
We're not.
Because they're looking at it from a campus-wide perspective rather than the individual building perspective.
And we can, by the way, I don't know that every bike rack on Princeton's campus is compliant either. You know, they, I, and I don't think we have a timeframe for them to upgrade their bike racks to be compliant. I think they, they do a report. They tell us where they have racks, where they need racks, where they're gonna.
But I think we do want them, the applicant, to upgrade their bike racks to be compliant.
We do, absolutely.
And so if, uh, they are not in compliance, where does that leave us? If we, if there's no timeframe, as Claudia indicated.
Exactly, exactly.
Um, so. I mean, I, I, I don't know how staff handles this with respect to the university, which I think is the only other institution that's chosen to use that approach. So I don't, I, I don't know how to answer the question. I'm, I'm, by the way, I'm not arguing against having a timeframe. And certainly, if the institute's amenable to having the timeframe, I think we can agree on it as, you know, in, in this resolution. But I don't want to impose something on the institute that we're not imposing on the university.
Yeah.
They're, you know, they're, they're operating under this section of the code. And, uh, I, I don't think it'd be fair to, um, impose something more, more stringent on the institute than what's on the university.
Can staff comment on exactly what the arrangement is with the university? Mr. Lusko or Mr. Weisman, is that the agreement with regard to the university's bike racks?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, um, though I think they, you know, you don't see bike racks like the ones we saw in the pictures earlier, so I, I think the, the style of rack and the, you know, space considerations needed and all that sort of thing, um, you know, they, they might be up to it, um, but I can't confirm that for sure.
Uh, I, I know, I was, I was asking what exactly the arrangement is.
So, so it's, it's, it's not a personal arrangement. It's following the ordinance. When the university, it has a standard bike, bike rack, and, and I think it just updated its standard bike rack as well. And over time, they upgrade the facility so it's uniform throughout the campus, so it looks nice. Um, and all our most recent, all the university's most recent projects have this new, you know, basically new, it's like a curvy design that complies with your ordinance. And you'll see that in the new projects that go up, you know, within the next year or two. And then over time, you'll see other racks that may comply with your ordinance the way they are, but they'll be upgraded to a standard design, so it's uniform throughout. But they'll be upgraded to a standard design, so it's uniform throughout campus. And the, you know, the, the institute's gonna do something similar. They're gonna come in with, um, their twelve racks that are gonna be brand new. And then they're gonna go around and, um, look at the areas and and come up with, you know, the number that they'll need to comply with the ordinance. And over time, those other racks will be updated, um, to comply and so that they have a fully compliant plan. As required by your ordinance.
Claudia?
I'm thinking perhaps that instead of a, a hard deadline, a good faith efforts. Uh, language so that it's in everyone's interest and we understand that you will be making progress. But we don't have a way of exactly measuring it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and that the plan, if possible. Tries to anticipate a timeframe for being in full compliance.
Yeah, and we're gonna be before you sooner or later, something.
Yeah, right.
I will say, I will say I would like to, I would like to impose a, a condition when the first report.
Yeah, I think, I think we have to, David, I was just.
Yes, and your suggestion is? David?
Uh, within a year from the date of this.
It just froze on my screen. Oh, everybody did.
Yeah, I don't see how we can just say good faith effort in, in a, as a condition, because I don't know how you would ever enforce something like that. I mean, I think that you have to actually have either a number or description.
Uh, the section of the ordinance, and I think Louise might be frozen now, so I don't know if we want, oh, there we go. Um, the section of the ordinance mentions an annual report at the start of every school year. Uh, so, you know, we might wanna either just note to follow that section, I think it's. Two eighty-two point two, um, with all the requirements that are in there, uh, you know, as part of this.
I think that's perfect.
And then, of course, the twelve by this location, if that's. You know, your, your choice to put those on would be required by the time of the certificate of occupancy. Or, excuse me, uh, well, yeah, by the certificate of occupancy.
What about this typically, could you say that again, Justin?
Well, basically, just they need to put the bike racks up, uh, first, you know, they would need to detail them in their compliance, the twelve. That they're saying just by the library, and then by C O, they would need to put them up. Because we right now don't know where they're gonna go by the library or anything like that.
So, so, okay, so this is a little bit different than what I expected. I expected the, um, the timing to be. The start of the school year immediately after the twelve spaces. Would be constructed so that we would have that as part of the report and the full compliance package. You're actually.
I, I didn't see it that way.
You're looking.
Let me, let me tell you, let me tell you what, what, what I have so far. Um, okay. This, it's gonna be a campus-wide approach. Um, there's gonna be an annual planning and, and study report. The first one is gonna be due, due the start of the two thousand twenty-five school year. That would include the twelve, they have to be up by the C O for the building. And the report has to also show how compliance will be done. Explaining the progress on the bike racks, and do we want a, a date of final compliance? A full compliance, I'm sorry.
Justin, I know you're looking at the ordinance, is there anything like that?
Uh, no, I, I mean, the, uh, ordinance really says the number that's needed, the number being provided. And a mitigation plan to address the shortfall. So again, that brings us back to. Do the old racks count? Uh, you know, so I think that's where Jerry's saying. Kind of compliance with the, those requirements, you know, could be required because of the variance. You know, and then we're back to where we were talking about the good faith effort essentially. So I, I, you know, if they followed, uh, that two eighty-two point two D to a T. Uh, it would not require the upgrading of those racks unless you specifically made that a condition. At which point, you know, I suppose you would be free as far as the, uh, applicant agrees to put in that. The racks need to be upgraded and by when?
A good faith effort? Within five years? So you're both doing the good faith effort and also giving a timeframe?
We can update the racks for a five period, I guess. It, you know, I think it's just gonna happen naturally over time, but.
Yeah.
Five years seems reasonable.
Okay, Dan Weissman?
Uh, if I may, it, it, the, I think the mitigation plan should identify the required, uh, updating of the racks. Um, because there are bicycle spaces, it doesn't mean that they're compliant bicycle spaces with the Princeton ordinance and therefore compliant. As to what the study would require. Um, so, but. I think what the requirement is, is that it's point four spaces per, uh. Student faculty member, um, and, and those are compliant park, parking spaces, it's not non-compliant parking spaces. So even though there may be a hundred and fifty spaces, or maybe only twenty of those currently are compliant, so it's really only twenty spaces are provided that are compliant with the ordinance. And then the mitigation plan that is required per the ordinance, uh, would have to identify how the balance are, are meeting it. Um, so I think the ordinance does cover it, um. But having that detailed in the condition would be great.
Okay. Thank you for that. So I hope we're finished with the bike discussion, but I have to say that even though it's been a really long discussion, at least it's been about bikes. And not cars. Which is something. Okay. Other conditions?
You want me to walk, walk the board through them?
Yes, please.
Okay, we had all those in the engineering report that Dan went over. I don't think we need to go through those again.
Nope.
Okay. The four E V spaces are be, to be relocated by the A D A spaces.
Yes, that was shown in their plan, right?
Yeah. No, it's testified to our, our original plan had it in the old location.
Yeah.
Well. Oh, sorry, Jerry, I let you go on.
Okay.
I think we're gonna say the same thing.
Well, I was, I, I was gonna go on to the next point.
Well, I, from what I heard, it was actually. One of them is going to become the A D A space, and then three more will be just south of that.
Okay.
Yes.
And then. There has to be markings prohibiting parking, um, by the depressed curb, is that it? Dan? And Justin?
Yes, I think that was a comment in Mr. Anosik's report, but yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
And then with respect to the, a couple of things with respect to landscaping, there should be a barrier for the English Ivy. Native plants should be planted. Instead, in the areas.
Native ground cover.
Native, yep.
And grasses and perennials in, um, some of what, some of those, um, squares that were labeled as lawn.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Just give me a second, please. Okay, native grasses and perennials in all of the squares?
Uh, there were three identified on the plan that I think were, Dan, do you want to speak to this?
That's.
Melski?
It was three. They, they offered to do some type of native ground cover or something in the three squares. Uh, in the, the upper portion of the plaza.
Yeah.
And then some, add some native. Ground cover perennials, uh, on the west side of the building near the holly planting that's going in.
Dan, what's that, native plantings?
Native ground cover perennials in place of some lawn on the west side of the building.
Okay.
And the barrier in the alternate felt with the English Ivy.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, English Ivy to be removed as part of this project.
Oh, is it gonna, okay, oh.
All right, but we weren't asking to remove all of it.
Yeah. Hold on one second.
Yep, the English ivory, uh, Ivy that we're removing as part of this project will be replaced with something else.
Right.
Should this? I mean, there should be a revised landscape plan. Who should that be subject to the approval? Would be the landscape committee, would it be you, Dan? Would it be, um, the arborist?
I think there are enough changes that it should come to the landscape subcommittee.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I, I think we also wanted to see locations of the, uh, trees. That have already been planted or will be planted, uh. Around, elsewhere around the campus, right? There's some twenty-two. That's on the plan they submitted.
Yes.
Oh, that was.
Yeah, I think that's the, um, the sycamores and. And so, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Yes.
Um, thank you, Jerry, uh. With the conditions just, uh, enumerated, um, is there a motion on this application?
And that one, and the one variance, we're still gonna grant the variance, correct?
No, the variance is not required, uh, if they comply with the ordinance as a. Campus wide.
Yep, yep.
Sorry. So this, uh, uh, a motion on this preliminary and final major site plan. With no variance required.
Cool, and with the.
But with the conditions that, uh, erase the variance or extinguish the variance.
Right, yeah.
Is there a motion? Um, moved by Mr. Cohen, is there a second? Who would like to second?
Oh, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Carrie, uh, can you give us a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Cafizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you all, friends from the. Institute for Advanced Study, um, you have a beautiful campus and this is a cool project and we appreciate your. Uh, being here for several hours tonight. Well, we.
Thank all of you a few times.
Yes.
We appreciate all of you. We know that you've been very busy this year and this was a special meeting added for us, so much appreciated.
Thank you very much. Well, the good news for board members is we do not have a meeting next week.
Thank you.
But we do have meetings the week after that and the week after that, so, um. Uh, Mr. Cohen?
I move that we return.
For being no further business.
Second.
I'll second. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, very much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful weekend and I'll see you in two weeks, if not before.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.